Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. This is our Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission and
staff that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate on the commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, a commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a member of the commission. To my immediate left is J. P. Van Ooyen, who is the vice chairperson of the commission. And next to J. P. is Steve Allenson. And at the lower table, on our staff table, is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who's our recording secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pagini, who's our town planner. And I'm Jim Saitter. I'm the chairperson of the commission. And our first, as we don't have any minutes on our agenda to approve, I'll make just one announcement as far as one item that's not going to be heard this evening at the request of the applicant. It's the site plan for a warehouse for Mark Development LLC at eleven zero seven Northrop Road. Again, no action has been requested on that by the applicant. And before I go to the first item on our agenda, I want to drop down to the new business. Is Stephen and Judith Van Blarcom, if I'm pronouncing the name?
Yes, sir.
If you're, okay, well, because that's an accessory apartment. Sir, if you'd come forward and begin your presentation, introduce yourself and begin your presentation. Oh, you stand, sit, probably be more comfortable if you sat. And it makes, it probably better to do to sit because then we can pick you up on a microphone. So if you would please just make sure that the microphone is close to you so they can pick you up. So again, introduce yourself and your presentation.
Hi, I'm Carmine Gianni. I'm a partner of Thomas Gianni and Sons, which is a building contractor. Stephen and Judy Van Blarcom are my customer and also a friend. We're looking to turn their existing house into mixed use, I guess it would be called. We want to put, they make the kitchen into a, oh, the garage into a kitchen, and a laundry room, and the existing bathroom, we want to add a shower. And that's pretty much it.
Just when you say mixed use, you mean accessory apartment, is that correct?
I guess what's happening is Stephen and Judy's living downstairs, and their grandson and wife are living upstairs. Most of the basement is already finished. It's been finished for years. We just need to...
So it would be an accessory apartment, rather than...
I guess, I guess it would.
Because when you said mixed use, I think we're all looking at that.
That's what they told me it would be when we went for a permit, is they told me it would be mixed use. I don't, we don't know why or what, you know?
That's probably one of the mysteries of life.
I don't know. It's actually kind of like a mother-in-law apartment, but it's really not, not a hundred percent.
Would be an accessory apartment, but no. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Allenson. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, jumped ahead of myself. I'm getting so excited here. Mr. Allenson, please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an interdepartmental referral from our fire marshal, an interdepartmental referral from our registered sanitarian, received October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The fire marshal's interdepartmental referral was received October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Excuse me. I'm also getting ahead of myself. We have an interdepartmental referral from our town engineer, dated receipt October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. And an interdepartmental referral from Scott Shipman, water and sewer, received November second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. And again, seeing no commission members had any questions, Mr. Pagini, any comments on the application?
No comments.
Thank you. I take it that's the extent of your presentation?
That's it.
We haven't voted on the application yet.
I don't know. All right, thanks.
I know you're excited. You never know. At this point in time, there's no further questions from any, any commission members. The applicant's finished his presentation. I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve site plan Van Blarcom eight Fawn Drive, application two-two-three dash two-two. Site plan request for a four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot accessory apartment located at eight Fawn Drive, subject to one, comments in the inter-office memorandum from junior engineer Scott Shipman to the Planning and Zoning Department dated November second, twenty, two thousand and twenty-two; two, comments of the Health Department and interdepartmental referral dated October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two; and three, final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer.
I have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes. Now the application's been approved. Have a good, yes, you are. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, jumping up now to the first item on our agenda, which is continuation of a public hearing, the zoning text and map amendment for section four-point-two-three incentive housing overlay district, section four-point-two-three, section point, four-point-two-three-e to create a new subdivision to increase unit density allowances for affordable units to fifty units an acre. And, Mr. Allenson, would you please note all additional correspondence for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a zoning text amendment, section four-point-two-three, incentive housing zone, consisting of one, two, three, four, five, six pages and a map.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. And again, as this is the commission's text amendment, Mr. Pagini, again, this is a continuation of the public hearing, but if you would just, for people who may not be familiar with it, just give everyone an overview of exactly what this is.
This creates a sub-district that we're referring to as the downtown development corridor, down in the incentive housing overlay zone. It'll consist of seven-point-two acres. The text amendment was discussed at the last meeting, and we did want to just make it consistent with the town center zone. So we looked at changing the remainder of the other sub-districts that may overlap the town center to provide for higher acreage, units per acre in those areas. And the overall creation of this sub-district is to allow for fifty units an acre within that downtown development corridor. And also, it also adds residential amenities to the first floor as an allowed use in the incentive housing zone. And I think that's pretty much it. I don't know if you want to continue discussion on this one?
I know the, we had some commission members at our last month's meeting were not, were not here. So I would open up to, you know, commission members, we discussed this last month. Any commission members like to make any, you know, any further comments on this? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was unable to attend last month, but I do support these changes to the incentive housing zone. Specifically, this is something we've talked about at numerous meetings, and the ability for us to provide different housing zone opportunities in town is important. So I'm in favor of the recommended change that we've discussed for months.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Any other commission members? This is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to come and comment on the, this particular application? Please come forward and name an address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Wolfe, a member of the Economic Development Commission. At our Monday's meeting, last Monday, we did discuss just what you had on the table from last month. And everybody in the economic development was in favor of supporting what you have before you. So we are in favor, and we do support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else would like to comment on it, I'd ask any, any final comments from commission members? Again, I always just make a comp that I'm certainly in favor of this. As Mr. Fitzsimmons pointed out, we've had this incentive housing zone on the books for quite some time. We really have not seen any development in that, in that area, as well as in our downtown quarter. So we've decided to look to increase the density. At the present time, in this particular area, the density would be twenty-six, depending upon the acres, twenty-six to thirty units per acre. And again, we, as mentioned, we haven't seen any development in here. So we were looking at this to try to create some additional incentive to see some, some development in this particular area. So certainly from my perspective, I'm in full support of the increase. Seeing that there's no further comments from the public, at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application nine oh four dash two-two zoning text and map amendment to section four-point-two-three incentive housing overlay district, section four-point-two-three, and four-point-two-three-point-e to create a new sub-district to increase unit density allowances for affordable units to fifty units an acre.
And we have a, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the zoning text amendment and map amendment for application for nine oh four dash two-two, a zoning regulation text and map amendment to section four-point-two-three, incentive housing overlay district, section four-point-two-three-point-D, and four-point-two-three-point-E, to create a new sub-district to increase the unit density allowances for affordable units to fifty units an acre, and to allow first-floor accessory residential amenities because it will allow for more opportunities to develop within our regulations.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Moving on, item number two, which is zoning text and map amendment for section four-point-two-six, town center, section four-point-two-six-b, fifteen, to create a new sub-district, increase unit density allowances to market rate units to forty units per acre. And again, Mr. Allenson, please note all additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the zoning text amendment, which consists of one page and a map.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Allenson. And again, Mr. Pagini.
So this is a, similar to the last one. It's the same general area, but it would allow for market rate allowances for forty units per acre. The, the changes that came out of the last meeting was, again, consistency with the incentive housing zone. So it was concurred with Corporation Council, whether or not to, which, which way to go with that. And it was decided that the, the units that would, that are currently required to be accessible in the town center, we would remove that. We would still encourage accessibility, but we would allow just first-floor apartments, provided they are not located on the ground-level street-facing area of the building, much as like the incentive housing zone allows. As I said, accessible features would always be encouraged, but it was expressed that there should be consistency with the incentive housing zone. Also, the, some of the other changes, I think we were going to have a parking discussion, but I don't know if we want to go down that road tonight. But I think it was discussed at the prior meeting to potentially decrease minimum parking requirements due to the changes in density that we're looking to do, maybe just in that one specific area. So I think it may be something we should workshop in the coming months to potentially look at that. And I know you had brought up the, the new uses. I don't know if you want me to get into that yet or wait until we discuss the...
I think it'd be better if we, first of all, just getting back to the, the parking, I think it'd be more beneficial, I mentioned to you earlier, to have some, you know, some suggestions as far as what we, what we might look at as far as, you know, reducing the parking, if, again, the commission's inclined to do that, some suggestions on that. And I think at that particular point in time, would also be appropriate then to talk about perhaps some additional uses. So at this point in time, unless other commission members disagree, I think let's just simply focus on what we have here. Everyone agree with that?
Agreed.
Okay, good. That being the case, I take it, Mr. Pagini, that's the summary of everything.
Essentially, we just took out the requirement for the mobility features in the town center and replaced it with just residential units and the same language essentially as the incentive housing zone.
Sure. And I think we had a fairly good discussion at our last meeting concerning this. But again, for other commission members, who may not have been there, or commission members that were there, if there's additional comments that they'd like to make. Seeing none, again, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to speak on the, this application? Please come forward and name an address.
Good evening. Joe Mira from Economic Development Commission. This also was discussed at our previous meeting, and it was unanimous vote to go along with your suggestion. We thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public? Any further comments from commission members? I guess from my, from my position, appears, when I was looking at my notes, it kind of got over my skis when I was talking about my comments on the first application. Again, this is for the forty units. And again, I fully support it. I think it's going to hopefully create some additional, or at least some interest in, in developing within this, you know, within this area. So with that, if there's no further comments from the public, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing for application nine oh five dash two-two, a zoning text and map amendment for section four-point-two-six, town center, section four-point-two-six-point-B, point-one-five, to create a new sub-district to increase unit density allowances for market rate units to forty acres a unit.
To have a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting by Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application nine oh five dash two-two, a zoning regulation and map amendment to section four-point-two-six, the town center, center sections four-point-two-six-point-B, point-one-five, to create a new sub-district to increase unit density allowances for market rate units to forty units an acre, and to allow first-floor accessory residential amenities because it will allow more opportunities for development within our regulations.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes. Moving on, comes us to item number three. It's old business. It's a site plan warehouse, five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, five Research Parkway. The applicant would come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And, Mr. Allenson, please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a memorandum from our town engineer dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. We have correspondence from our town planner dated August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Interdepartmental referral, date of receipt, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, from our fire marshal. Correspondence to Colair Properties from our town planner dated August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Traffic Overview with received date of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Jeffrey Dewey at BL Companies to Allison Kapaschinsky, town engineer, dated September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Jeffrey Dewey at BL Companies to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Site Operations and Maintenance Plan, stamped revised, received date stamped October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Traffic Overview, stamped revised, received stamp October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from a Jane Ronca to Kevin Pagini, dated October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. An inspection report from the Wallingford Fire Department containing an interdepartmental referral from the fire marshal, and that is stamped with a received date of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Kevin Pagini, town planner, and Allison Kapaschinsky, town engineer, to Colair Properties dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. An interdepartmental referral from Vanessa Batista, registered sanitarian, date of receipt August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Dale P. Horrigan and family to Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commissioners dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Joan Di Pasquale to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Dr. Edmund Holman to Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission dated October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from James J. Perito Esquire to what appears to be Kevin Pagini. And there is no date on this. Correspondence from Vanessa Potista, chief sanitarian, memorandum perhaps, to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Interoffice memorandum from Scott Shipman, senior engineer, to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated November second, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Jeffrey Dewey at BL Companies to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated November second, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Jeffrey Dewey at BL Companies to Kevin Pagini, town planner, and Allison Kapaschinsky, town engineer, dated November second, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Traffic Overview, stamped revised, stamped with a received date of November second, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence and addendum from Robert De Meo to Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Memorandum from Janice Small, Corporation Council, to Kevin Pagini, town planner, dated November third, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from James and Carol McColsky to James Saitter, chairman of Wallingford Planning and Zoning Office, dated November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Linda Prinzorn to Kevin Pagini dated November third, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Jane Kincaid to Kevin Pagini dated November third, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Scott Gray to Kevin Pagini dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Jen Frichette to Kevin Pagini dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Cindy McCaffrey to Kevin Pagini dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Janet Sizik to Kevin Pagini dated November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Correspondence from Beverly Morse to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated November third, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Supplement to Application for Site Plan dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Email correspondence from Joan Munger to Kevin Pagini dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Construction Site Contingency Plan for Erosion Control and Emergency Spills stamped with a received date of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Erosion and Sediment Control Report stamped with a received date of August fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and a set of site plans.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. And now, at this point in time, if the applicant and/or its representative, please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is James Perito. I'm an attorney with Halloran Sage in the New Haven office, two sixty-five Church Street in New Haven. I represent the applicant, five Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, the owner and developer of five Research Parkway. With me is Jeffrey Jekoway, who's the owner's representative. Also on our team tonight is Chris Gagian and Jeff Dewey, Dominic Saltruda, and Pat Pudo, all from the BL Companies. What I'd like to do is provide a brief overview of the application, the process that we've gone through, the standard review, and the details will be reviewed by our engineers, by Chris, who's on my left. The site plan here for five Research Parkway is a site that I am certain you're all quite familiar with. Unlike prior applications for the site, we sought special permits for larger developments, we waited during the moratorium while you revised your regulations to create the new zoning districts, which focused on balancing development and the desire to protect water quality in this watershed area. We filed in August of this year, looking for site plan approval of a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot warehouse with ten thousand square feet of office and associated parking for cars and trucks in the new watershed interchange district, WI Zone, and watershed protection area. The site consists of approximately a hundred and eighty acres, a substantial portion of which was previously developed as the site for the Bristol Marsh Squibb research facility. The majority of the prior development and buildings have been demolished and removed. The WI Zone, as approved by, by this commission, that was a power outage, in April of twenty-two, provided that warehousing and distribution, excluding freight terminals and drop yards, are permitted by site plan approval, so long as the peak hour vehicle trips are less than a hundred, utilizing the standards in the most recent edition of the trip generation I T E. And that's in your section regulations, four-ten B four and four-ten C. So we first filed our initial plans with the towns in the Wetlands Water Cross Commission. We were granted approval by them on October fifth by unanimous vote, after several public hearings with input from the public and staff. The review was detailed and focused on the protection of the wetlands, the wetlands buffer, the watershed, and water quality. The town engineer, Mr. Pagini, and the town's environmental planner, Ms. O'Hare, gave a detailed analysis and review of these plans. And our engineers worked with staff to make the changes all the parties felt would enhance the protections that our design had already put in place. While stormwater is within your purview, the Wetlands Commission and staff reviewed the proposed systems to ensure the wetlands and watershed would be protected. Notice of the wetlands approval was published. The appeal period has passed, and no appeal has been filed on that, nor can it be now. The application included all the required submissions set forth in Regulation seven-point-four, including required map surveys and plans, open space and landscaping plans, staging plans, sedimentation erosion control plans, traffic analysis pursuant to the applicable trip generation I T E, stormwater management plans, and utility and lighting plans. The applicant and the engineers met with town staff and reviewed the technical comments and suggestions set forth in staff comments, which were, included the town engineer, town planner, senior engineer from the water and sewer divisions, and the fire marshal. In addition, comments from the Wallingford Health Department were reviewed and incorporated. Town staff visited the site with the applicant's engineers to review technical aspects of the sedimentation and erosion control plans and stormwater systems. Thereafter, revised plans were submitted to reflect compliance with the comments and the reports. The final plan revisions are what you have before you tonight. All of the submitted plans meet all of the bulk standards for yards, coverage, height, parking loading, landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management. I submitted a memo, which sets forth most of this, but I want to point out a couple things. On a standard review for site plans... On a standard review for site plans, as set forth in the memorandum from corporation counsel Janice Small, dated November third, quote, "When a commission acts on a site plan application, does so in an administrative capacity. If the plan meets the specific regulations, it must be approved." Attorney Small succinctly and correctly sets forth the standard for this commission, and the staff reports make clear that this site plan application meets those requirements. A couple of other things. Before I have Chris review the compliance with the site plan objectives, I thought it would be helpful to look at your Plan of Conservation Development, because under Section seven point two A of your regs, it says, one of the things you're supposed to consider is the town plan of development, that the proposed site plan shall be in general conformance with the intent of the town plan. However, the town plan doesn't override or take precedent over the specifics of your regulation. So in your P O C D that you adopted in twenty sixteen, in reference to this site in this area, under Chapter two, it talked about growing Wallingford's economic base and attract diverse businesses. Noted challenges include the impending departure of major employers in town, such as UPS Distribution Facility and the Bristol-Maher Squibb Research Facility. Excuse me. Broadening the range of potential businesses that can take advantage of Wallingford's accessible industrial lands can help attract businesses, building the tax base, and local jobs. It advised work to locate new tenants for the Squibb facility, continue to monitor the situation, and explore incentives for further development. Under Chapter seven, Future Land Use Plan Recommendations and Consistency, it talked about the then-existing zones, the I-five and I-X. It said where expansion and intensification of industrial and some commercial uses is desirable. Lastly, under Economic Development, it talked about as a highest importance was to attract new businesses to key industrial areas and work to locate new tenants or uses at the Bristol-Maher facility. I think this development meets those objectives of the P O C D while complying with the site man requirements. At this point, let me turn it over to Chris. He'll review the site plan objectives and how our plan meets that.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Gagnon. I am a professional engineer with BL Companies, three fifty-five Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. Thank you for taking the time to hear our application today. My part of the presentation is going to be twofold. We're going to walk through what the site plan shows, and then I'm going to hit on a couple of important points in your regulations, the standard regulations, as well as the new watershed zone, and demonstrate how the plan in front of you is in compliance with that. So what we are proposing, as referenced before, is a total of a four hundred and fifty thousand square foot warehouse building with ten thousand square feet of that to the office space. With that, you are required to provide, obviously, parking and loading into the warehouse itself. So we are providing a hundred and five loading docks, and then there are ninety-six trailer parking spaces around the warehouse itself. And then we have five hundred and thirty parking spaces to serve the warehouse. And at this point, I am going to, while I'm talking about the site, I am going to hit on one of the topics in your seven point two site plan objectives with respect to circulation and parking and traffic. Part of what this design provides is a separation of the tractor-trailer access to the site from the pedestrian vehicle parking, for lack of a better way to describe it. You can see that the trucks that need to come in to access the facility will follow this darker gray drive up to the site, and then the vehicles that are coming up to the site for warehouse workers will be able to come in to the site using this first driveway and access the building, never needing to cross the trafficway of the trucks that are coming in. So that, you know, hits on seven point two C and D in your regulations. I'll go through that list in a second, but I just thought while I was talking about the site plan, it was important to note some of the ways that we are in compliance with the regulations. So we're proposing the warehouse on the southern portion of the property with associated parking and loading. We are accessing the site from Research Parkway, using the existing curb cut and drive where that signal is with the food bank right now. The signal's turned off or in permanent flashing mode. And we're accessing the site through the existing driveway. We are proposing maintenance on the driveway, but that is the limit of our work in this area. And then from there, the vehicles take a right turn up to their parking, and the trucks would take a right turn just a little further on. So along with compliance of the zoning regulations, we also had to comply with the new watershed protection district. And what that really establishes is it kicks up the landscape requirements, strengthens the stormwater management requirements, and then also introduces a new one hundred-foot non-disturbance area that is outside of watercourses and ponds. And what we're showing with that dashed line there, that represents the hundred-foot buffer from watercourses and ponds. Note, it does not reference in the regulations the wetlands, but we're also outside of the hundred-foot wetland buffer as well. But this new regulation, what it triggers is essentially a non-disturbance area for proposed activities within this hundred-foot area. So what we did to make sure we complied with this, our original design, this driveway was a little closer to this pond, and to make the grading work, we were also proposing slightly raising the grades of the existing driveway. To comply with this, after meeting with town staff, we have both the water department, engineering, planning, et cetera, put our heads together with town staff, and we revised the entrance to the site off of the main road to be a little further up the road and to provide this hundred-foot buffer so that none of our proposed activities would encroach within that hundred-foot buffer. Currently, the existing driveway comes through there, so we will be we will be taking that up. But so in doing that, we are removing activity from this hundred-foot area in order to protect the ponds and streams that go on site. So that was, you know, one of the main site designs that we had to make sure we took care of so that we were in compliance with that. Another thing associated with that and reacting to this, the utilities do follow this spine road, and we worked with water department and sewer department to propose our utility tie-ins outside of this buffer as well. So that also was a revision to the plans in reaction to the watershed regulations. Again, big picture, we are providing a robust stormwater management plan, erosion control plan, all vetted thoroughly through the wetlands approval process. The stormwater plan hits all the requirements of the new watershed district, as well as the erosion control plan. So in terms of stormwater management, I think our little landscape plan here shows that a little better. The main components of the stormwater management plan are the sand filters which are required in this zone. So we have two sand filters. One is on this side of the world over here, and this is another larger sand filter that we have over here. And we have a stormwater basin right here with a sediment for bay and some infiltration and underdrains to provide the required water quality. And again, I'll do a full summary of it, but why this is important for the new watershed regulations. They require that for the water quality volume, all parking, all proposed parking and roads be treated with a diversion structure, a hydrodynamic separator, and then into the basin. So as part of our redesign, to make sure we stayed out of the hundred-foot area, we had to still make sure that our proposed parking and pavement complied with this section of the the watershed regulations, fourteen point three, point B, point one B. So for these, for all of our stormwater quality, we do have a diversion structure, which then goes to the hydrodynamic separator, which then goes to the sand filter. So all of our proposed pavement is treated in this manner. You can see over here, we have our diversion structure, we have our hydrodynamic separator, which then goes into our sediment for bay. You know, this is good engineering design anyway, but it also hits a key point of the of the watershed protection regulations that you folks have in place. And another component of that is to encourage infiltration of stormwater. So another thing that we worked through very closely with the wetlands department is that we are proposing a large perforated pipe along the front of the site, along the front of the building, excuse me, that will infiltrate about half of the roof runoff. So between the infiltration of the roof runoff and what we're proposing in the stormwater management basins, we're hitting some important parts of the watershed regulations, which is to encourage the infiltration of stormwater runoff and no direct channeling of untreated surface runoff to the resources. So our stormwater management plan complies with that. We also have a robust landscaping plan. That was another component of the watershed regulations. Not only, we always showed landscaping per requirements in our original application. However, part of the improvements, I think, in the watershed regulations is they require landscape islands every fifteen parking spaces, and they also require it over in the loading area. So this is one thing that Planner Pugini caught for us. So not only are we proposing it in the vehicle parking area, but we also propose the required landscaping in the trailer parking, as well as in the vehicle parking area. So that was another part of how the watershed regulations required some, I think, very positive improvements to all site plans that will be in the zone by requiring these islands every fifteen spaces at the end of aisles. So that, I thought, was another way where we're demonstrating compliance with that. So that is really a general overview of the site. I am ready to start clicking off some, how we comply with seven point two of the site plan regulations, the site plan objectives, and then the watershed zone. But before I go away from the site plan itself, are there any questions, or would you like me to just jump into the regulations here?
At this point in time, any commission members would have any questions on what's been presented so far, or would they like the applicant to continue? Sir, I think that we'd like you to continue with your presentation.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. I just thought this would be an appropriate time to ask. Thank you very much. So with the site plan application, there's really a couple of things that we need to demonstrate to you folks. Section seven point two provides the site plan objectives in your regulations, and there are A through J requirements in the regulations that we need to demonstrate with our application. Seven point two A speaks to the plan of conservation and development. That was covered earlier in our presentation. This site is referenced directly in that. Section seven point two B speaks to public safety with respect to accessibility for fire and police protection. We received comments from the fire department. When I say comments, we received a response back from the fire department where they had no comments. Again, to touch on safety for a little bit, as I spoke of before, the site is designed, which is really standard practice when you have vehicles and trucks coming into the same site. We totally segregate this traffic, so never will a employee of the building have to cross truck traffic to get to the site. So we really made it a point in this design to provide that safety. So that really hits on some of these overlap, as you guys, I'm sure you know. So along with the traffic and pedestrian access, the site itself provides that safety. So that's A, B, and C. Circulation, parking, adequate off-street parking and loading. We comply with what is required for, based on the size of our building, so adequate parking. And then we also comply with the loading, so that hits seven point two D. We have the appropriate curbing and walkways and access to the building for the safety purposes. Seven point two E is landscaping and screening. In, this is where we need to make sure we comply with both seven point two, as well as the new watershed regulations. So this plan in front of you complies with Section six point one four. You know, some of that is making sure that we are minimizing any new tree clearing, because we're redeveloping an existing site. We do minimize tree clearing. The setback from the property lines is significant in both elevation and distance. We are lower than our abutters to the east, and we're approximately a thousand feet away from Research Parkway. And then where we are, a bit closer to a residential zone, we have significant screening along the side where we abut the residential zone. So we are in compliance with not only six point one four, but in the new watershed regulations, as I discussed a little earlier, that we have added the additional islands, we've added additional trees, we've added the additional shrubs to comply with the requirements of, let me just get this, four point one zero D for the landscaping. So we hit that, so the landscaping is one where we need to make sure we hit sixteen point four, as well as the new watershed regulations, and this plan does. Seven point two F speaks to lighting. The photometrics demonstrate appropriate light levels to be used for safety, as well as minimizing any light trespass off of the property. as minimizing any light trespass off of the property. So the, into rights-of-way or residential zones. So the lighting plan provides that, as well as the screening also helps with that. Seven point two G speaks to public health. This site is served by public water and sewer. It has been extensively reviewed by the water department, and we have a memo from the water department with conditions of approval that we are happy with. Seven point two H speaks to preservation of sensitive environmental features. Again, we went through an extensive wetlands review process, and we have redesigned the site to comply with the watershed protection regulations. There are no historic views or other significant features on site, and we are in compliance with, by the nature of this redesign and complying with the watershed regulations. That helps us hit seven point two H. Seven point two I speaks to drainage for this project. We have a comprehensive three-phase erosion control plan. We infiltrate roof runoff. All proposed parking and driveways is routed through the appropriate water quality required, BMPs as required by appropriate drainage design as well as your watershed regulations. As required, all peak runoff rates and volumes are reduced as a result of our stormwater design that I spoke about earlier. And seven point two J speaks to water quality. Again, those somewhat overlap in that our stormwater design, our drainage design checks those boxes. I think one thing to note, currently, the site only has a stormwater collection system, which then discharges into the ponds and wetlands on site. So in my opinion, the runoff leaving this site and our calculations also demonstrate that this would be, this would improve water quality as well as it will reduce runoff rates and volume. So in our own little way, it will reduce the runoff rates and volume coming from the site, which will only help downstream issues. So as we've seen for the site plan, we have section seven point two of the regulations, A through J, and it was really important that our plans and presentation hit those. The other section of the regulations that we obviously need to comply with is our new watershed protection zone. And a couple of things that are very important with respect to that zone. So one thing that's very important with this zone is the traffic that gets generated as a result of a development. The proposed development in front of you, per the regulations, were required to use the most updated ITE generation to generate the traffic trips to put in our analysis. And based on our analysis of this size building and the office associated with it, we are well under the one hundred peak hour vehicle trips for this site. So we are in compliance with that section of the regulations. The other important things I touched on a little bit, I'm not going to read through the entire sections of regulations, but in terms of, you know, the front yard, that was a big component of these new regulations. Our site, our building is approximately a thousand feet away from Research Parkway, and it's about seven hundred feet from where our development starts. So we were well over that hundred-foot front yard requirements. Another important part of the watershed regulations is the open space on the site. Fifty percent is required. We're well over that fifty percent. And it's requested in the regulations, where feasible, that the open space contain native species and the resource areas. So our open space on this site, luckily, we have some very large wetland complexes that allow us to comply with that. Stormwater management, I've hit that pretty hard, but the design complies with the watershed regulations. No direct untreated discharge. All proposed parking is treated, as I said. Hundred-foot buffers between all the streams and surface waters. Through the wetland process, we have a comprehensive O and M plan for the site. The other part of that is landscaping. We definitely hit the landscaping requirements, as discussed earlier, in terms of the islands, shrubberies, and plants. So what we have here is a plan that we took great pains to make sure it complied with not only the original zone which we're under, but making sure that the new detailed requirements of the watershed protection overlay were also hit. So I think we checked both the boxes with respect to the objectives of the site plan application as well as the extra requirements that were placed upon us by being in the watershed district. So that concludes my attempt to be somewhat succinct but also comprehensive discussion of the application.
Thank you, sir. Do I take it that this concludes your presentation?
Let me just, a couple of points, Mr. Chair. Obviously, we're open to any questions. We'd be happy to answer any. The town planner, I've seen his proposed motion of approval that has some conditions. We've reviewed all those. We're certainly in agreement with all the conditions and certainly can comply with all those, and would be happy to answer any questions from both the chair or any of the commission members that they may have at this point.
Thank you. Let me just wait for the lights to come on. At this point in time, before I go to commission members for questions, Mr. Pajini, comments on the application, if you would, please?
Yes. I think I had commented to the applicant to potentially give an overview of the proposed operation as what you would expect daily, something like that. I believe you said you might do that during the presentation. So if you can maybe describe the operation, even though there's no tenant currently, I think that would be helpful for commission members as well as the public.
Be happy to. Jeff, would you come up to do that?
Yeah. And before Jeff comes off, could you turn that light off, please?
Oh, this one right in your face?
That's great.
Jeff, check away with Colair Properties.
If you could maybe talk about the types of tenants that you're going to try to be getting in this building and what kind of operations they would be having.
Jeff, check away with Colair Properties. Also, currently, we don't have a tenant for the property, but...
You can just pull that a little bit closer to you. I can't pick you up.
As a planned state, too, we're looking for a Class A warehouse user for the property, which would typically be a certain number of employees that utilize the parking spaces out front as well as, you know, warehouse, delivery, usage of the trailer storage spaces. You know, we do anticipate not limiting the hours of operation for this type of use. But in general, we look towards having a standard warehousing use that, you know, isn't a drop yard or some of the other things that were, you know, put forth in the new regulations that are not allowed. We're definitely planning to stay away from everything that is no longer allowed in the district per the revised regulations. If there are specific questions, I can do my best to answer those for you.
Sure. Commission members with questions for the applicant, whether it be for the use or just questions on the application itself. Begin with Mr. Cohen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just, could you explain then this Class A warehouse? You did mention in that comment, delivery and freight. You know, can you give us a better feel for what a Class A warehouse is?
From a Class A warehouse, it's just a well-manicured, maintained site. It's a building that typically of this nature would be a tilt-up construction with forty-foot clear storage, ESFR, fire suppression to meet the needs of, you know, the classification of everything that would be stored in there. Some small office component to serve that warehouse use. I don't really think I mentioned anything related to freight, but just general shipping and receiving on warehouse product.
So basically, you did mention as a delivery-type operation. And, you know, since you brought it up, I guess I might as well get into a few of my comments that, you know, this description of warehouse, you know, without knowing who your tenant is, causes a lot of questions in my mind, is to the, you know, how this fits into our regulations, quite frankly.
Maybe I can help with that.
Well, I'm, let me finish.
Okay, question.
I'm sure you can, but I want to say what I want to say. You know, there's a lot of different types of warehouses according to the ITE land use codes, right? There's number one fifty, which is warehousing. Then you get into one fifty-one mini warehouse, one fifty-four high cube transload warehouse, one fifty-five high cube fulfillment center, one fifty-six high cube parcel hub warehouse, one fifty-seven high cube cold storage. So when you say warehouse, according to our regulations, based on, you know, what's written, you're talking one fifty. And again, based on the size of this, which is four hundred and forty thousand square feet, and you just mentioned it, and you've got forty-foot-high walls, this falls into a major distribution center, not a warehouse. So this is, you know, where I struggle with, you know, what you've presented as far as fitting into, you know, the regulation for this site. So...
Okay. I'll be happy to answer that. I think that under your regulations, there's no distinction under warehouse and distribution. What you point to is calculating the trips based upon the ITE. And our traffic engineer who's here, and I'm happy to have her come up and go into detail on the report, and the report you have submitted, the October thirty-one, twenty twenty-two dated one, which was a minor change from September, which just clarified the correct zone. You're correct. They use the one fifty designation based upon the size that's in there. And by using that required manual, the trips that are calculated are actually done very conservatively. So it's not an estimation based, you know, that is underestimating what could be there. It's actually overestimating what actually can be there. I think that if there was another standard, it's not set forth in the regulations. And a warehousing that uses this square footage, by the nature of how you're describing how to calculate the trips, it fits that definition. So I think that's what we have to follow. One of the difficulties in trying to have, you know, an actual tenant is when you don't, in the prior applications that have come in, when there's not a sort of certain path towards approval, you really can't find a specific tenant because it's somewhat speculative and it's also, it's within your purview with a special permit application to grant or not grant. The site plan gives more certainty, so that's why we've tried to fit your application to your regulations, having gone through the moratorium and putting in the new regulations and changing the zone. And our focus has been, quite honestly, you know, to the extent we can in all regards, protecting the watershed, protecting the wetlands, protecting the assets on the property that your regulations have asked us to do. On the traffic end, we think that using the regulations you've pointed us to and your town engineer has agreed, that the trips that are coming in here, which are about eighty at peak, makes us in compliance. Now, if we end up having a tenant and if it turns out that they're a different classification, then maybe we have to come back to you at that point, if it's not going to fit that definition.
Again, for me as a commissioner, without knowing what that ultimate use is going to be, you know, we're just approving, you know, a building. We don't know. This is a land use board. We don't know how that site is going to be used without knowing who that tenant is. You know, getting into the traffic, from my calculation, and I'm certainly not a traffic engineer, but you're pretty close to what you said as far as eighty trips. I used a point zero one nine multiplier, and I got eighty-eight peak hour trips. So we're getting pretty close to a hundred. And I don't know if the engineer wants to weigh in on that number, but if you go into the higher uses that I've mentioned, for instance, if you want to use a one fifty-six, you know, you're creating a hundred and eleven peak hour trips. So again, the use of this is, you know, what me personally as a commissioner is, I'm trying to figure out and make that decision.
We'll have our traffic person come up and try to explain that to you. That might be the best way to do it.
So that's fine. And since we're going to talk about traffic, you know, the last meeting with Amazon, there's a lot of discussion on, you know, the access roads, sixty-eight, Research Parkway. And every meeting, I asked the same question of, I think it was Mr. Dewey, no, the other traffic engineer. Those roads are currently at a class, some of them are Class C, Class D, we're right now without this warehouse. And additional, we have other warehouses in that area now, too. I asked him every meeting, how much more traffic can be added to make these intersections fail? And we didn't get any answer for that. So, you know, that is another traffic concern that I have because unfortunately, this item should be taken into consideration as far as whether or not we can approve this. This does touch into, you know, safety and some of the other traffic concerns that are mentioned in, you know, Regulation seven dot two, et cetera. So, you know, those are a couple of my traffic concerns. And again, go back to the old application where, you know, the exits on ninety-one north and south are, you know, not failing but close to failing. You know, the peak hour on sixty-eight, that left-hand turn into Research Parkway, you know, is almost at the failure point. And one of the other things I wanted to, since we're talking about traffic, in your traffic overview, item two eighteen twenty-two I, you know, you've got this nice, nice big diagram of the turning radius of the trucks, and it's turning from sixty-eight into... And it's turning from sixty-eight into Research Parkway. And I'd like to find out why you have that in there, you know? Is that a concern to us? And actually, the two pictures don't look any different to me, so I'm trying to figure out what the difference is. You have, you know, photo one and photo two, but they look identical. So tho- those are a lot of the, the traffic concerns as well. And then, you know, I don't know, when you went to the fire marshal, if he's aware of, you know, how high these walls are going to be. And in your site map, and I can, I've dog-eared it, so I can dig it out if you want, but, you know, you mentioned the, the forty-foot walls, but you also have a provision in there where you might want to raise those, the heights of the walls. You, you got a plus or minus in the specs there. So I'd like to find out, you know, is it forty or is, is it going to be more? You really didn't get into a lot of detail on, you know, the size of this building and things like that. Certainly the storage loading docks can be rearranged if, you know, there's a different use that comes up with the tenant. And going back to the fire marshal, with that forty-foot wall, again, I'm not sure if he was made aware of that, but there are special considerations for the fire department if, if the walls are that high. And I'm, I don't know if they have any standard procedures now for any forty-foot high, you know, buildings here in town. But again, the, the, the use, the tenant and the equipment that potentially, you know, could go in that warehouse does impact how the fire department's going to work. Because if there's a lot of automation in there, you know, they're going to have to understand, you know, what's in there to fight a potential fire. So, you know, these are a lot of the questions that, you know, again, you, you haven't really gotten into a lot of this detail. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, spent a lot of time going through these documents to, to figure some of this information out, which, you know, quite frankly, I think you should have, you know, presented to us so we didn't have to, you know, see what was missing. And I, I, I think a lot of the info, you know, we had to dig for it, at least I did. So again, as far as, as parking, you know, the numbers really don't add up. You've got five hundred and thirty parking spaces, yet you're saying you have less than a hundred peak hour trips. I don't see how those numbers work out. You know, if you have less than a hundred peak hour trips, how many, how many people are going to be on site? And again, it's going to be based on tenant and what you put in there. But you don't know that, and we certainly don't know that. So how, how can we base a decision on not having that information?
If we could have Pat come up, she'll, the traffic consultant, she'll be able to describe some of that because in fact, I, I went through that the other day with her on that aspect. So I'm happy to have that stuff answered.
So I, I think, I think I've said pretty much, I have for this, this one, one question. So, thank you.
Pat, could you come up, maybe?
For the record, my name is Pat Padlo, and I'm a professional engineer as well as professional traffic operational engineer. And I work for a company, BL Companies, at three fifty-five Research Parkway in Meriden.
Pull that a little bit closer to you.
There you go.
To address some of your comments, or just to start off, for this analysis or for this application, we have utilized Warehouse Land Use Code one fifty from ITE Trip Generation Manual eleven edition. You are correct to state that all the traffic that is being generated using that land use code generates less than hundred trips, meaning it's not a significant amount of traffic to warrant a traffic study based on ITE, major traffic generator. If there's a need for a study, similarly, OSTA, similarly, Connecticut DOT, OSTA states that if you generate less than hundred trips, there is no need, it's not a major traffic generator, there is no need for a traffic, for a traffic study. What I also want to address is you've mentioned several, several codes of warehousing. You've mentioned one fifty, one fifty, one fifty is just what we're using, one fifty-four, which is high cube transload, one fifty-five, one fifty-six, and one fifty-seven. What is interesting across all of those, with the exception of high cube parcel hub warehouse, which is specific to Amazon, the one fifty warehousing is the most conservative out of all of them. The one fifty-six high cube parcel hub warehouse is also limited by amount of number of samples that ITE could utilize to generate those values. So when you compare it apple to apples, based on the square footage, one fifty warehouse is the most conservative. And again, it generates least amount of trips across all of them, with the exception of one fifty-six.
So, yeah, if I could just interrupt you there. Sure. Again, my, yes, and I, I was basing my multiplier on one fifty, and I believe it was zero point one nine. And I came up with eighty-eight, is, is, which is a little more than what you, you folks-
You probably use the tenth. I don't have the, the actual multiplier in front of me, but I'm assuming it, it might be just the updates between the ITE Trip Generation Manual, between the eleventh and tenth. The eleven seems to be a little bit different when it comes to warehousing because they provide additional categories.
Yeah, I think I had eleven. But it, but again, eighty-eight is, it's not a hundred, but it's ten percent more than eighty, so.
Understood. Then we also had a comment on the left turn movement off of one six, of Route sixty-eight. This is something, and the graphics, we're presenting them because this is something that we were required or asked in a previous application with Connecticut DOT, OSTA office. So in anticipation, when we go through the official process, again, we're hoping that this is going to be an administrative decision with OSTA. We will have to present to them again, how do we impact the state roadway? So we are providing the information that CT Route sixty-eight, the double left turn into Research Parkway operates with a throat width of thirty-seven point five, but the guidelines suggest thirty. Interestingly enough, Connecticut DOT recently has resurfaced the roadway, and the striping was kept the same way, from what I understand, or in the vicinity of it. So it's something that will bring it to their attention again when we go through the AD process with the OSTA office.
So, yeah, so if I could interrupt you again.
Of course.
You know, I'm looking at the charts, TT dash two, that, you know, show the scenario one versus scenario two. And, you know, again, they, they look identical, and I don't know what the distinction is in this left-hand turn as far as the trucks. And I, in both scenario one, scenario two, you say revised lane width to eleven.
It's restriping of the roadway to provide a wide turn, so both trucks, if there's a need for two trucks taking a left, they'll fit.
Right.
And they can. The roadway is, the roadway width is there, it's just a matter of shyping.
Okay, I, you know, again, I, I see no di- I, I get it now, but I, I don't see any difference in the, you know, one and two. So that, that was my question. And, you know, this intersection, again, came up in the Amazon warehouse because this left-hand turn and the, the, call it the middle lane left-hand turn, from, I believe it's six thirty AM to nine thirty AM, Monday through Friday, that is left turn only. And there's a little sign, couple hundred yards, maybe a hundred yards up in front, saying to all the cars, you know, what the situation is here. And I happen to drive through this quite frequently, and every time I'm, I know to stay over in the right-hand lane, but you know what? Nobody else does it. And, um-
No comment.
Yeah. You know, again, with, with the increase in traffic, again, which was not really accounted for the, the side streets, this, to me, is, is still a major issue as far as, you know, what's going to happen on the site. And again, you can see the, the off-ramp here, and, you know, this, and I think Mr. Baghini mentioned it in, in his comments, where OSTA needs to, you know, weigh in on this, and they may or may not have any, any comments on this. And, you know, quite, quite frankly, they, they need to have positive comments on this. They, they can't administratively, you know, look at this and say, yeah, it's going to be okay, because it's, it's really not okay now. And I think with, you know, the additional traffic generated, again, less than a hundred trips, peak, peak trips, but, but close, you know, and again, it wasn't accounted for in, in the, in the presentation, the study, the comments, you know, I, I think it does impact how, on how we have to react to this application.
Maybe I can make some clarification on that. This is not a special permit. This is a site plan. And if I can just-
I understand that.
And let me point out-
I understand that completely.
Under Pansy Road versus Town Plan and Zoning in Fairfield, two thousand and seven, Supreme Court case, it reiterated that the standard that once a zoning authority establishes that a particular use within a zone is permitted, a conclusive presumption arises that such a use in general does not adversely affect the traffic within the zone. That's not to say that the state, OSTA, won't look at this. They will, they have to. It's their jurisdiction. It's what they look at. Your commission can look at internal traffic, internal flow, internal traffic safety, that's totally within your purview. And I think that we talked about that with the separate driveways and keeping the pedestrians from the parking areas separate from the truck areas. But when you, when you have a site plan approval process, off-site traffic is not really within your jurisdiction. It's within the states, and they're going to have to look at that. And if they feel something has to happen, we'll have to deal with them in that regard. So I mean, I, I know that may not, may not be the answer you want, but I think that's the law, and I think that's how your regulations are set up. So, I mean, I would like, Pat, to talk about the, the parking, because I had that exact question. Why is it that we have this number of spaces and why, why that's generated that way? And maybe, Pat, you can talk about that.
Yeah, be- before you do that, again, I just want to respond to your, your comment. And yes, I, I understand what you just said in reading the case law. I read that in the application, I read that in your recent memo. And I'll bring it back and say, without understanding completely who this tenant is, it, it's a false equivalent. We cannot determine factually what the traffic is going to be. So that's, again, you know, something, again, the fellow commissioners are going to have to, you know, figure out, so.
Pat, can you talk about the-
So I, I know there was one question with regards to the number of parking spaces, vehicle, passenger vehicle parking spaces versus the number of trips that we're generating. Two points that I would like to make is the less than a hundred peak hour generated traffic is let, it's not the peak time or peak number of vehicles generated by the site. And then because there's a potential that the warehousing could operate in more than one or two shifts, you need to accommodate additional parking for switch of shifts. And that, that's why we're forecasting that many parking spaces.
And the, this is Chris Gagnon again with BL Companies. And the peak hour is just one hour. There are twenty-four hours in a day, so it's only accommodate, it's only speaks to that, that individual hour. So there'll be vehicles coming and going.
Sir, if you could please-
There'll be vehicles, that ding was for me. There'll be vehicles coming and going more than just one hour a day. So the, the, the peak hour speaks to just that moment, that sixty minutes throughout the day. So it's not directly equivalent to how many cars will be parked on site.
If I could just follow up on that. Again, when we're looking at this, looking at your, you know, at the traffic study, the first traffic study that you had was in August, and that's where you had the, you know, three hundred and fifty-six car parking spaces, and then it was the ninety-seven. And then back in September and then in October, they were pretty much the same traffic studies that you prepared. I think the last one was certified. And then you went up to the five hundred and thirty cars. And again, the trailer spaces were ninety-six, they were down just a little bit. But in all three of those, you know, you indicated that the, the total in and out of the facility was about seven hundred and, I guess, seven hundred and forty-nine, seven, so we call it seven hundred and fifty. So again, then I'm looking, I come back to the number of parking spaces you're proposing. If you're having just seven hundred and fifty in and out, so that's three hundred and seventy-five, whatever the math is on that, really vehicles coming in, I, I'm looking at the, the increase in the parking to the five hundred and whatever. And I, again, I understand you say, well, we may have shifts, we may have all of that. I understand that, but it's still just a number of, you know, it's just a number of trips that are coming in there. I, I just, I'm looking at the, the five fifty or whatever it is, the five something, the increase, and, and just struggling to see how that makes, how that jives, if you would.
So I'll, I'll, I'll go give this a try. So a couple of things to, this is Chris Gagnon again. Couple of things to take into consideration with the, with the parking spaces and ITE and your regulations. The, the parking lot, the parking provided on any site needs to comply with the bulk zoning requirements of the zone that we are in and the proposed use. So the, the site plan design begins with, with that as, as our target number. And I believe that, closed it out. And the, just based on the zoning requirements, the total required number of spaces is four hundred and eighty spaces. So based on your regulations, that would be the absolute minimum that we would be allowed to build on this site based on this zone. Your regulations also allow for a hundred and twenty percent increase from that total required number. Our five hundred and thirty is well below that one hundred and twenty percent increase. So the, the parking lot that is proposed on these plans complies with the requirements of the, your, your regulations with respect to, to parking for this use, and it also complies with the watershed zone regulations, which allows for up to a hundred and twenty percent of, of that required space. of, of that required space. And I think we get into an apples and oranges situation when we start comparing I T E to exactly the number of spaces that are, are on the site. It's a different set of regulations that we're demonstrating compliance with, and they're not necessarily one directly tied to the other.
Yeah, no, I fully understand that. But Mr. Pugini, if in fact, because again, this is in the watershed. And certainly what we want to do or look to do is to reduce the parking requirements. If in fact, I understand what our regulations say, and I understand what you're saying, because you have two separate things. You have the I T E and you have that. So I, I get that. But as far as the commission looking to reduce the number of spaces based upon what's being presented to us as far as the I T E numbers and, and what they're saying, here's coming in, here's coming out. What latitude does the commission have as, as far as reducing the number of parking spaces?
Well, in the new W I regulations, we did allow for the commission to waive up to 75% of the required parking area if the applicant demonstrates that such a waiver is warranted, provided that an equal area to the space.
Slow down, Mr. Pugini, please.
Provided that an equal area to the space required for such parking, topographically suited for parking, and in addition to the minimum open space area requirement shall be reserved at the site in conformance with the requirements of this chapter. And any later use of this reserved area for actual parking would allow the property to remain conforming in regard to the open space requirements of this district. So it would...
So at the end of the day, if we wanted to... If we want, if we're looking at the 356 and whether that's that number or whatever number, what, what ability do we have to lower that? They're looking at the 500 and something is what they're presenting.
You'd have the ability, but it would be up to the applicant to...
I understand.
Obviously, agree to that.
I understand.
So town staff would be amenable to the reduction in parking requirements, provided that if they do potentially have a tenant and they do need more parking, then they would have to come back. So I don't know how you would want to, to work that out, but it would, the waiver would have to reserve the area on site. So obviously, the site would still be in conformance with the open space. And obviously, they're showing more now. So anything that would, that would be there would be already presented on the site plan.
Yeah, you can see what I've been kind of driving at, maybe in an awkward way. We have, you know, we have two, two things. You're, you're having your, the I T E says this amount of traffic, the 700 and whatever. But then you're showing on your plans that, well, I need more parking spaces to accommodate the 375, whatever trips that, that are coming in and the 375 that are coming out. And to me, if I look at and say, if your folks are saying, well, I need 536 or whatever the number is, then I look at that. And again, I understand what the I T E says. But it's, it seems to say to me, well, there's going to be more trips coming in and out. You know, there's going to be more than just the 750 total in and out combined with the additional parking spaces. There's going to be more than that. And then does that trigger from 80 or 88, pick a number, as far as what the peak hour number is, does that trigger the number coming higher? You know, that's, there just seems to be some inconsistencies. Again, I fully understand what you're saying. We're looking at two different things. But I'm having a tough time reconciling it. Maybe it's just me.
I, I think, I, I think the question was somewhat reiterated, and I think I gave our...
I understand what you said.
Our, our response. The, you know, I, I just, at the risk of somewhat repeating myself, traffic to a site is generated by the use. You could have three parking spaces and be grossly underparked. You would still have the same traffic coming to your use. You could have four billion parking spaces and be way overparked. The traffic is generated by the use. So just the concept of having additional parking spaces does not necessarily trigger more trips. So I don't think having a parking space number necessar, the number of parking spaces doesn't necessarily invalidate.
I understand. So I, I think, just to kind of sum this up, at the end of the day, you're basically saying you don't need the 500 and some odd parking spaces. The 300 and whatever it is, 56 works for you. I think that's what I'm hearing.
If we have, if, if tomorrow, you, you know, we have an approval and we can get a tenant that comes in, and it turns out that we don't need the five, that number of spaces, we'll come back and ask for the reduction. We'll come back to you to do that. At this point, we don't know that, and we can't really limit ourselves because the parameters of, of what we're fitting into meet your regulations. And also, you know, the, the counts that come in. And it's, it is sort of interesting how the number of spaces and the number of counts for the hours don't seem to line up. But that's how the calculation works. Because often you may have, if it's like a shift kind of thing, you have a parking space there, someone's coming in, there's more spaces, but they're not necessarily using those because they're coming in and out at different times of the shifts. So I, my, what I would say is that if we have a tenant in the future and we're able to come in and ask for the waiver and show that we meet the requirements in your regs for the, for the reduction, we'll come in and do that. You know, we don't want to have more spaces, frankly, and build more spaces than what our tenant would need.
So if, by using that logic, then if you're coming in to request it, then you'd have to, I would suspect, do another traffic study for us, which could then trigger it being, putting it into a, into a special permit then. Because if you're, if you're saying, I need the more spaces because I'm having more cars coming in or the, the uses, then I would assume then you'd have to look at, again, the peak hours and, and all of that.
I'm not following that. I mean, if, if we'd be coming in to ask for less spaces, if, if a tenant comes in and says they don't need that many spaces, it would be, it would be less trips.
Maybe, but I...
And that's why I'm not a traffic engineer.
Yeah.
I mean, Pat, if you have an answer, that's fine. But I'm not a traffic engineer.
Okay. Not sure if that answers my questions, but I think we're, probably have other commission members that would like to comment. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could through you, I guess my first question is for our town planner. Sitting here, listening, reading, absorbing. Could you tell me the date of the application and when this commission has to decide by?
The date of the submission was August 5th, and I believe the applicant can extend it another 30 days beyond today, but they would have to consent to an extension.
So we're not, we're not required to vote on it this evening?
You would be. They would have to consent to the extension.
Okay. Because as, as I wasn't here in October, I, I noticed that the applicant sent a letter agreeing to consent. So I wasn't sure why he consented in October if it wasn't necessary.
Because it was over the 65 days. October was.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then, again, through you, Mr. Chairman, through the town planner. I don't have in my package the letter from the town engineer dated November 4th, 2022. You provided some summary in your notes to the commission, but I don't have the original. Do you have a copy I could look at?
It wasn't a memo. It was comments that she had done in a letter that was submitted quite recently. So she had just emailed me the comments, and I included them in your packets.
So what I have here is her exact verbatim, or is it your summary of her?
No, it was her exact verbatim that she had instructed me to put into the notes.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I received, again, through you, Mr. Chairman, we received all the emails from the members of public, but we don't have the email from the town engineer.
Oh, I could provide that.
It's what, what I'd, what I'd offer is, it's unusual, because I'm looking for correspondence, and, and your comments to us say, "Town engineer also had some comments for the commission in response to Robert DeMayo's comment letter dated November 4th." They are, has, follows. So I was looking for her, her memo, email, or something. All I have is your notes to the commission. So is there anything additional, or this is it?
No, this is it.
Okay.
And I could provide that email if necessary.
Yeah, I would like a copy. I think if I, I know, and I, I do not disagree with either of the prior speakers, and I'm trying to focus my questions differently. Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant. So the town planner said you applied in October. Have you had more than 10 meetings with the town staff? Any official in town in Wallingford?
I personally have not. I would have to ask Chris if he has.
Yes or no?
It's, it's, it's right around 10, between wetlands meetings, meetings with commissions, meeting with, with planners, meetings with town engineer, meetings on site. I mean, I, it's not like I was keeping track of every single one, but there was a whole bunch of them.
There's, yeah, and I appreciate that. As I'm looking through the, the volume, if I might, thank you. As I'm looking through the, the, the volume of data, this, this reflects a lot of activity for a site plan, not a special permit. And, and I know I had a prior conversation with the town planner some time ago that this was applied for as a site plan. And judging from the notes, you know, the 180-acre site, the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation, the vehicle trips, it's, this is probably the most significant site plan I've ever seen while I've served on the commission. The building orientation, is it facing Research Parkway?
Building is essentially running parallel with Research Parkway. I don't know if it's facing it. The pedestrian access is on the, the southern side. I'm not quite sure.
Are regulations required that buildings face the street? We changed the regulations recently. So it's just a question, is, is the front of your building facing the street?
It's not a commercial building. It's not a residential building. So I don't know if they really have fronts or sides.
Our, our regulation, as you've been talking this evening, refers to buildings should have a front orientation. It doesn't specify commercial or residential. So it just, it's a question. And I heard during your presentation, you talked about the front of the building with the loading dock. So I'm just saying, is that the front of the building?
I have not defined what the front of the building is. I'd, I'd have to discuss that with my applicant. I mean, it's, it's a good question, but it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a commercial structure where the public is coming in. This, this building we're in has, has a front. This is a different type of structure.
It doesn't, it's, it's not visible from the road, and it doesn't really lend itself to a sort of a front or a back. I mean, there's, there's sort of loading docks on both sides. It's hard, it'd be hard to say. I mean, you could say the loading docks are the front, because that's, it's functioning as a warehouse. It really is whatever the owner designates as a front.
I, yeah, and I, I guess the reason I ask the question is, in relation to our regulations, you're telling us how you comply. So I'm just asking, does, does the, is the front of the building comply with our regulation? So which is the front? I, I, I mean, I, I'm not, it's a fair question, I guess.
Yeah, it's absolutely fair. It's just in the context of this particular building, it's like, it's not something you would think of. But we could, we could have a side that's facing Research Parkway, the front. We could designate that the front of the building.
All right. And then by understanding, under our site plan objectives and our regulations to the town planner, anyone in Wallingford in their official capacity review the traffic information, other than you and the town engineer?
Uh, no, the town engineer reviewed the traffic.
Okay. So, and because it's a site plan, we don't have the ability to ask for a peer review or a second opinion for someone representing the town, correct?
Correct.
And then if I could go back to the question Commissioner Cohen asked, he was asking about Class A examples. Is there someone there? Would FedEx be considered Class A?
FedEx actually would fall into probably 156 category.
I'm sorry, Class A or not Class A? Not, not Class A?
I don't believe it's Class A.
And what is...
If we're going, I'm sorry, I don't know the Class A. I, if I were to go by I T E trip generation manual, it would not fall under 150 warehousing, FedEx.
Right. Commissioner Cohen was, was asking, it relates to what is a Class A, and none of them were named. So I, while others were talking, I'm thinking, well, FedEx has warehousing, the different uses of it. But I'm just curious, would that be considered Class A?
Jeff Checkaway again with Calera Properties. I don't really, I'm not really sure how to answer the question. I don't think that naming the tenant FedEx, is there a specific use? Do they only use buildings for one use in their portfolio, or do they have multiple different uses among their portfolio?
Well, yeah. Right. Well, I guess the reason I ask the question is Commissioner Cohen had asked, what is Class A? And then, and I, he didn't ask, and I was, I wanted to ask as a follow-up, can you give an example of a Class A? And I presented as FedEx, an example of Class A. So FedEx has ground operations, airport operations, and, and various types of operations, all different. Is any of that considered Class A, would be the question. I, I'm trying to get a visual, because I'm not in warehousing. And, and this is our opportunity to talk about it. So I'm just trying to get a mental picture of what would be Class A. I know a Class A is in real estate, but again, I'm not, this is warehousing.
When I said Class A, I was defining the, the type of the building, the, the height, the type of fire suppression system, the qualifications of the building. I wasn't name, going towards naming a tenant.
Right. No, I, yeah, okay. I, I guess, I, I know you're not going to name a tenant. I didn't ask you to name a tenant. I just asked you to give an example of a Class A. And so I was proposing FedEx. But I, I think I understand where you're going. Then I guess, I just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to paraphrase the information, the applicant's representative verbalized that you've seen the conditions of approval from the town planner, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, do you have the comments from the traffic, from the town engineer dated November 4th that I mentioned?
Look, I'll try to pull it up.
November 4th.
Your gentleman like to...
The notes.
It's here, and then it can, it continues on.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for a second?
Absolutely.
I, just to interpret the town engineer's comments, I think she's referring to Mr. DeMayo's letter dated November 4th. I don't think she's saying she had a letter. At least, that's how I read it.
Right, right. I, yeah, and I appreciate that. No, I, I read that. I, I know Mr. DeMayo. I, I guess it was just the, I thought there'd be something from her. What, what I want to get to is her memo talks about the fact that the, the traffic memo still contradicts itself. An O S T A review will be required, all capital, as the development is over 100,000 square feet and 200 parking space, though exceeding only one of those warrants, though exceeding only one of those warrants is an O S T A review. That's explained on page two. This is latter contradicted in the first paragraph of the conclusion on page three, where it states... conclusion on page three, where it states an OSTA review will not be required. She anticipates, paraphrasing her paraphrase, I, it says, "I anticipate OSTA will review this as a MTG, which stands for Major Traffic Generator, due to the modifications proposed to Route 68 turn lanes onto Research Parkway. Therefore, I have no say in this decision, and my opinion, my opinion is purely speculation." So, I, I guess the question to the applicant is, is that your understanding on the OSTA review? Because she is referencing in her memo, or comments she provided to the town planner, which he paraphrased to us, that there is a contradiction in your traffic information.
So, a couple things there. It will 1,000% be reviewed by OSTA due to the number of parking spaces and size of the building. I think that one "not" in the end of the report was just a typo. It will need to go to OSTA. The concept of the different types of OSTA reviews, there are two types. There's an administrative determination and a major traffic generator. The difference between those two is limited to whether proposed off-site improvements would be required. So it's the same application and the same submittal that, that is provided. Not to put words in the town engineer's mouth, but based on potential recommendations of something as simple as a lane restriping, that would make it a major traffic generator. And that, that does not mean that you need to rebuild an exit ramp off of 91, or, there is no, um, once you have a proposed off-site improvement, it could be adding a stop bar somewhere. The simplest off-site improvement, it's considered a major traffic generator. So, it's, it's not based on being major or very impactful for traffic. It is only based on the concept of a potential site improvement, off-site improvement would be required, like the left turn lanes, for example. So it doesn't make it any more impactful on the roadway, it just may have one of those recommended things, some tree clearing for sightline would make it a major traffic generator.
My recollection is when they passed that, it was 14311, might have been the statute that sort of defined major traffic generators, it was when the shopping malls were all going up, back in the probably late 70s, early 80s, and they defined it as the number of parking spaces and the number of square footage, which nowadays, when you think of some of the stuff that's been built since then, pretty much everything falls in that category, for the most part. But that's, I think, it's just like a, sort of a misnomer, so I think Chris explained that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other commission members? Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry. I've got a lot of stuff in front of me. I did have a question for our town planner. This is the first time I've ever seen something like this, so I just wanted to ask if you've had a conversation with our registered sanitarian about the application?
I did, they just mentioned the well blasting in her comments, that was the bulk of her comments to me.
I guess my question is, her comment on the interdepartmental referral, which it says that it's suggested well testing, she suggests well testing.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if that is a typical comment, because I haven't seen it in my time on this commission. I've never seen that comment before. And is that just a peremptory recommendation? Or is there something, I mean, it presupposes that, in my mind, it presupposes that something's missing regarding the construction. And I just wanted to know if this is just a normal concern with this type of a build, and because being in the location that it's in, and the type of plan that is being planned, she's recommending this, or?
She said it's common state regulatory language when any blasting is done in, in proximaire wells. So, I believe the applicant spoke directly with the Health Department to address those concerns. The Health Department also recommended, I believe I may have left that out in the motion, to establish a baseline to test the wells beforehand, before construction, if they are blasting. They haven't established yet if they have to blast or they do not, but that's something that they would have to obviously comply with if they were to do any blasting.
If I could help with that?
Yes, please.
Because yes, there was a series of emails that were in response to the, her initial memo, and she sent an email out, Vanessa Batista, Director of Health, said, "This email's in response to your email to Kevin Wallingford Town Planner, if there is no blasting taking place, then no further actions are required. In this case, it is recommended for homeowners with neighboring wells to test their well now, so that they have a baseline prior to any construction." And I think town planner is correct, that if there is blasting proposed, which at this point, we have no plans for blasting, that there would be, you know, they would look into the testing to make sure that there's no problem with the wells. But again, there's no, there's no planned blasting at this point.
Thank you. And, and just back to our town planner, and I apologize, because I just want to make sure I understand everything that's being said.
Absolutely.
This is a standard recommendation if there is blasting, is what you're telling me?
Correct, that's how the Health Department conveyed that to me, yes. I don't want to put words in her mouth, but she was consulting with the applicant back and forth, so.
Thank you on that. To the, to the applicant, I do have a couple of questions. I know you mentioned hours of operation that could be in flux, depending on who the tenant might be, but you anticipate, and, you know, you're offering a 24/7 type of operation?
Correct, it'd be 24/7 being offered.
And I'm guessing that because of the unknown tenant, it's unknown whether refrigerated or reefers will be present on site, because you don't know who's going to be there.
That's correct, but if that gets to like, I know there's, there were some comments in some of the things I saw from the neighborhood about, you know, noise. Your noise ordinance is pretty clear, and any tenant we have has to comply with a noise ordinance, that'd be in their lease, we would require that if we're operating ourselves. So, you have protections in place for that type, for that type of thing.
Thank you, I'm, I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm not on noise yet. I'm, I'm actually going to traffic, and I'm going to classification of the warehouse, because a reefer presupposes spoilage of food, which means that their truck generation needs, needs to move faster, and the number of reefer containers that are on site means more trips. It's just a fact, because our eggs don't last forever. So, without knowing who the applicant is, and this goes back to Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Fitzsimmons's comments, we can say right now, and you, and you have said right now, that the use is, is a 150 use. But if all of a sudden, 50% of those spaces needed to be used for reefer-type containers, that changes the trips, and we don't know if that's going to be the case. Right?
I'd have to say, correct, we don't know if that's the case.
Okay, I just want to make, I'm, I'm not playing any games, I'm not asking any trick questions, I just want to make sure that I understand what is before us. So, so I appreciate that. I did notice on the, on the rear part of the site plan, there's a lot of spaces, which looks like they're, they're set for trailer drops. When the, the plan was put together, how did you determine how many spaces for trailer drops would be necessary? Was that based on the square footage of the building?
Hi there, Chris Gagnon again, for the record. So, again, in an attempt to comply with the regulations, loading, parking spaces are required, you're allowed to have up to 120% of the, of the loading docks in terms of trailer parking spaces per your regulation, so we're actually under, under, not underparked. We, we are well below the allowable number of trailer parking spaces. And just real quick, Pat must be clairvoyant, but she has the cold storage or reefer reference, those peak hour trips are actually considerably less than the, the 150. So, again, our 150 warehousing in terms of trip generation is, is a more conservative assumption than the cold storage. So, the, in, in my opinion, the question about whether the tenant is refrigerated or not, actually doesn't have a negative impact with respect to the number of trips generated.
So, the, the reason I'm asking about the, the drop spaces is because parking in this zone is, and parking spaces in this zone is a big concern, which is why we've made some changes to our regulations. So, in order to make sure that the application complies with our plan, this is what I'm trying to ask, so I want you to understand why I'm asking. Because I'm not just asking so you can hear my voice, I promise you.
On, on both the truck parking and the, and the car parking, it's not the maximum that your regulations would permit on the site. We've tried to be, trying to strike the balance between what an ultimate tenant may need, and also not putting more there than is needed in the ultimate design of the project.
Right, but it would be fair to say that you're anticipating for what the market might demand of you, but you don't know.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I did notice, and this was just the most recent traffic overview, it was revised, and it's just, just a question on preparing these documents and everything else. The document is signed and sealed by a Michael Dion, who is not the engineer sitting to your left. I understand that, I just want to ask the engineer sitting to your left, a couple of questions, just to make sure that we're, we're looking at the same thing.
That is correct.
And, did you have any input in putting together this traffic overview?
I drafted the original study, Mike Dion, who signed and sealed, is my supervisor.
Okay, so it's really your study, your study with Mike's signature?
That is correct.
That explains it to me. I thought you wouldn't be a Michael. I did have a question on the plan. I noticed to, what I'm going to call the right of the plan, where the residential zone is, you had some significant foliage and trees planted, but in what I'm going to call the rear, the back, that borders electrical property, and then there's residential kind of up the hill, which on past applications, the public has mentioned noise concerns coming in that direction. Is there any plan for any noise shielding in the back?
There was not anticipated any at, at that point. It's a, it's a fairly long distance, and there is a fair amount of foliage between there.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm very familiar with, with the area, and with the traffic, and with the noise that, that comes up there, so I'm, I'm just asking to make sure. I do have just a, one quick comment. I might be one of the only commissioners that has traveled, and regularly travels this more than Commissioner Cohen, this area, and I can tell you, I have the same concerns about the traffic denigration that's occurred and will likely occur here. That two-left turn that we have no comment on, I understand engineering-wise, two tractor-trailers can make a left at the same time. Once a week, I see one tractor-trailer fail to make that turn. So, I'm just concerned, I want to make sure that it is safe for everyone traveling in that area, I want to make sure that this application, if approved, would be safe and meet those guidelines. So, I do have that comment, and I understand what you're telling me, but my eyes tell me other things from seeing it, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Any other commission members? Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, first of all, I, I have more of a comment than I do a question, and I will get to questions. I personally am not happy with our regulations. In my mind, and I'm just going to say it, we revised our regulations, we just went through a, a very long and protracted process, and I spent hours going through the regulations, we had discussions about provisions in our regulations that would have made this very application a special permit, not a site plan. Those provisions in the final version were taken out. And I'm bringing this up because I'm not happy about it. So now, here we are. We have a site plan for a 450,000 square foot building with five, over 500 parking spaces. In my mind, there's no reason this should be a site plan. That's just, that's just my comments. So I'm, I'm frustrated by the process, I'm frustrated that we're here tonight in this position. People may be upset with me, but I'm frustrated. So, let me get to my questions. How tall will this building be? I thought I heard 40 feet, but I'm not.
Jeff Checkaway with Clear Properties. The intent is that we have a, a 40-foot clear building, which would, including the pitch of the roof and surrounding elevations, be somewhere. I believe in the, we don't have the building designed done, I'll, I'll come straightforward and say that now, it's something we would typically do until we have site plan approval, before we proceed with that, but the intent is that we have a, a building that's 40-foot clear, it may be around 52 feet high. I know that the regulation dictates it's 40 feet, but in a situation where you're away from the furthest setback, you're allowed to go one foot up in elevation for every two feet additionally out from the setback, and I believe at the closest point, we're 80 feet, six inches or so, so it would give us the ability to go approximately, is it 15 or? 15 feet higher than the 40-foot allowed within that regulation, so we intend to be within that regulation.
Okay. So, would it be fair to say that the building would be at least 40 feet high, maybe, maybe taller, depending on the final version plan?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I know you have applied as a warehouse. I guess, one of the questions I do have for Mr. Pajini is, when an applicant comes with an application, and they say, "We're applying for a warehouse," does your off, do you or anybody in your office review those plans and say, "Hey, wait a minute, is this really a warehouse, or is this something else, or are they categorizing this right, or is that left up to us?"
No, we review it, and then we review it with the Law Department, and we review it with the town engineer and the Water and Sewer Division. with the town engineer and the water and sewer division. Um, I mean, the speculative nature of what you're getting into, I think is like, what, what is prohibited is prohibited, what is allowed is allowed. If someone is presenting a warehousing use, that's how we present it. We don't play detective with the applicant, say, "Oh, are you going to do this or do that?" Or, you know, we look at it based on the use that's described in front of us, um, so.
And, and I guess my next question is, um, do any of you up here know what the definition of a, um, high cube warehouse is under the ITE?
I have it on my phone. I don't have it here with me. Um, I can look that up, but essentially, it, it, essentially it's an, an Amazon warehouse or an Amazon high cube warehouse.
Well, I, it, it, here's the definition that I have, because I've, I've actually gone and had to do some of my research, my own research. Um, um, and what I have here is, a high cube warehouse is a building that typically has at least 200,000 gross square feet of floor area. This building does, right? We're at 450,000. Um, has a ceiling height of 20 feet, uh, 24 feet or more. This building would potentially, we, we would be at 40, at least 40 feet. Um, and is used primarily for the storage and/or consolidation of manufactured goods prior to their distribution to retail locations or other warehouses. That would be this case here because we can't have parcel sorting, right? Or, uh, or distribution in this zone. So this would have to be going to retail. Anything stored in, in this building would have to be going to retailers, right? So, so essentially, this building that you're proposing, um, qual-
I believe there's one more category that you're missing when describing the hub or high cube parcel hub warehouse, it's also the modes of transportation.
Just please-
For the record, Pat Padlo.
You can, you can pull the microphone a little bit closer.
For the record, Pat Padlo, um, my apologies, one more item that always, uh, that describes the high cube parcel hub warehouse is also the modes of transportation that are accessible by the warehouse, and right now we're limited to just trucks. Um, when you have high cube parcel hub warehouse, there are other modes in the vicinity of the warehouse such as aviation or, um, or, uh, trains.
Sure, no, I, I understand that. I understand that there's different categories. This is the general definition of a high cube warehouse. There may be additional definitions for various categories of, of high cube warehouses, but generally speaking, any high cube warehouse-
It needs multiple types of modes of transportation to be provided in order to function as a high cube, uh, as a, a hub warehouse.
I'm not talking about a high cube hub warehouse, that's a subcategory of high cube warehouse. Okay? A high cube warehouse in general is something, is a warehouse that is 200,000 gross square feet of floor area or more, has a ceiling height of 20 feet, four feet or more, and is used primarily for the storage and/or consolidation of manufactured goods. Okay? There are, I understand that there are, uh, subcategories which would include high cube parcel hub warehouse, which is what I think you are speaking of, that is a subcategory. I understand that we are not dealing with that type of warehouse here. Are you aware, um, i- is anybody, um, in your group aware of any, um, criticism of the ITE manual with respect to high cube warehouses and the trip generation that high cube warehouses produce?
If you can.
Um, for the record, Pat Padlo, uh, yes, there are some criticism of it, however, whenever, um, there are studies of high cube parcel hub warehouses in Connecticut, Connecticut DOT, and if they're located on a state route, Connecticut DOT OST office requires, um, usually tho- those type of warehouses are for Amazon distribution centers, and, um, Connecticut DOT OST office requires a different type of trip generation provided by, um, the Amazon.
Okay. Um, here, here's the reason why I ask. Um, y- you know, in about five minutes' time on Google, I, I came up with a document produced by the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission in Pennsylvania. They oversee, uh, 62 communities, uh, in Pennsylvania. Um, and one of the things that they say about the ITE and high cube warehouses is that there is a relatively small volume of study information av- available in the high cube warehouse land use database. The database relies primarily on floor area, while there is a stronger correlation between vehicle trips and building gross square footage in regard to high cube warehousing. Gross building storage square footage is currently not available in the ITE trip generation manuals. The document then goes on to say that the reason why gross square footage is the more accurate measure is because high cube warehousing, generally your traditional warehouse is 24 feet high. In recent times, what is happening is warehousing is getting higher and higher and higher. And so what's happening now, and also at the same time, becoming more automated. So what's happening is at 40 feet, almost up to 52 feet, it's like stacking one warehouse on top of another. And not only are you stacking one warehouse on top of another, but now you're making, now you're automating it, which is then creating more traffic generation because goods are moving at a much faster pace. And why I think that's important is because, and, you know, I, I think, you, you know, in, in the presentation, there was a little language that was left out. And what our regulation actually says is uses in the zoning district generating 100, uh, well, there is a, uh, requirement for a special permit when the use in the zoning district generating 100 peak hour vehicle trips or more using the standards in the most recent edition of the Trip Generation ITE or a more accurate source if available. Um, s- so the question then becomes, is the ITE really the most accurate source? And unbeknownst to me, um, and it's, it's actually an issue that I brought up in prior applications on this property and during our, um, discussions regarding the revisions, was whether the ITE is really kind of outdated at this point, uh, because these warehouses are getting larger and more automated, and goods are moving at a much faster pace. And I really didn't get a satisfactory answer at the time, I don't think, in my mind, and now I, I look at something like this, and clearly there is some disagreement as to whether we really should be going on, um, uh, the, uh, square fo- the floor square footage. Um, and especially when, when I hear that we're actually going to be potentially having a building that is twice the side, twice the height of a traditional warehouse, um, I have concerns, and I'm not sure that this is actually a building that is going to generate less than 100 peak hour, uh, trips, uh, per day. Um, the other question I had is, um, there was the, the, some discussion about the parking, um, spaces, and my understanding is that there are 530 parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And those parking spaces, I think there was some discussion as to whether they're really needed or not, and I, if I understood correctly, it was, the answer was, "Well, we don't know if we're going to need them, we want to have them if we do need them, if we don't need them, then maybe we come back and we ask for a reduction." Is that, I mean, basically?
I was responding to the chairman's question, which was, you know, because of the zone and the water protection, um, area, the watershed protection area, this commission is always looking to try to reduce the number of parking spaces, which, which is great. Um, it, because our tenant is speculative at this point, we wanted to provide what we believe will be a sufficient number while staying below what would be the max on this site. If it turned out that we could provide fewer spaces based upon a tenant, if, if you are to approve us and we can get a tenant and we're able to provide less, then we would come back under the provisions of your regulations saying, "Can we provide fewer of those parking spaces?" So there's less disturbance, less runoff.
Okay. And I think when asked, one of the responses was, "Well, we need that much because of, um, personnel shifts."
That's a, that's a potential, yes.
Right, and, uh, you have 530 spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you have, uh, you don't know who your tenant is, right?
Right.
You don't know when those shift changes are going to be, correct?
Correct.
And you don't know how many people are going to be, um, uh, involved in those shifts, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that kind of leads me to another, it, another question, which is, at, with 530 spaces, there's a potential that each day, depending on who the tenant is, that you're going to have over 100 peak hour trips per day, because you don't know when those, you don't know who the tenant is, you don't know when those shifts are going to be, and you've got 530 spaces that you're asking us to, to approve.
No, I, I think that it goes back to the use and the square footage for the use, because that's what the calculation is based on. So it's not based on the parking. The parking spaces and the square footage, when it's under the state's review for, uh, for traffic generators, that's their trigger to look at that necessarily, but it doesn't, they don't look at necessarily, you know, um, uh, number of spaces, you know, beyond the 200, I think. They look at how the traffic has to come out at that point. But I think that the, um, you know, the, the point of the spaces that are there is if we have a tenant that needs them that are there, and I think that the intention would be to come if we don't need them to get a reduction from you.
Then, Mr. Pajini, um, with respect to a site plan application, when it gets to, um, the point where we're at a hearing and the presentation is being made to us, and there is a requirement, um, that a particular application, um, or a particular applicant, uh, show or demonstrate what the traffic generation will be, who has that burden? Is, is it the applicant's burden to show, um, that they fall underneath that 100?
Yes, they, they are stamped licensed professional engineer and they put that on the line when they come to a meeting.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, I, I see that we do have a memo from the, um, from Corporation Council, um, and I'm a little, kind of, I was kind of a little surprised to see this. Um, generally, we don't get a memo from the, uh, Corporation Council unless it's prompted by either us or somebody asked the, the Corporation Council for a me- a memo. How was, uh, what initiated? How was this initiated?
It was requested that she look at the application to determine whether it was special permit or site plan, and then the memo was given to me.
Who asked, but who, who asked for that opinion?
Prompted by a commission member, I believe, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Okay.
He had, he had asked.
Okay, fair, fair enough, fair enough. Um, and then I, I do have a question. I do have a question on, um, Attorney Perito. Um, in your supplement to application for site plan dated November 14th, 2022, the last paragraph, um, and I, I just want to clarify this, um, the last paragraph suggests that once a zoning, you, you quote the PNC Road, um, case, and you say, once a, in, in that, um, decision, the quote is, "Once a zoning authority establishes that a particular use within a zone is permitted, a conclusive presumption arises that such a use in general does not adversely affect the traffic within the zone."
Correct.
Right? And then the next sentence is, "The review of traffic concerns are limited to onsite traffic flow."
Correct.
Um, well, we have a, um, we have a provision in our regulations that basically says, even if this use is permitted, if the use generates over 100 peak hour trips, it's by special permit.
Correct.
Are you saying that that provision is illegal?
No, it's a special permit, it's not a site plan.
No, but you're saying, but the, the, the language that you quote here says that when a particular use is permitted, so in this case, warehou- when I read this, wh- the way I read this is, when a particular use within a zone is permitted, warehousing, in this case, warehousing, right? A conclusive presumption arises that such a use in general does not adversely affect the traffic within the zone. Okay? So I'm left to think, well, if it's, i- if it's warehousing and warehousing is permitted, then there's no adverse traffic, uh, effect.
If that particular use is permitted by special perm- by site plan, if it's special permit, it opens up all kinds of areas that you can look at. As you said before, your concern was, you know, you, you weren't happy when the regulations were changed because you felt that warehouse should be within special permit, and I understand your concerns about that. Um, you know, a lot of the questions that we've gotten tonight stem from your own regulation, which you created the box when you change your regulations, and, and we've tried to follow that as best we can. You raised questions about the IT. There may be other methodologies. The IT is what's accepted, the IT is what, um, ConDOT uses, the IT is what your engineer looks at. We only can use the tools that both your regulation and sort of the standard is to use. Um, that's really the best we can do, and we've, we've tried to come in with a, a proposal, uh, and we know all the history with this property. I haven't been with all the history of this property, you all have, but I know the history with this property because I've, I've looked into it. You know, the site plan parameters, that box that's created, I think we've, we've shown that we fit into that. I mean, if you are not happy with how your regulations sort of created that box, you can change that, and, and maybe you will, but that's what we have at this point.
Yeah, but you will agree with me that there is a, uh, there is language in our, um, regulations that it would allow us not to use the IT if we found that there was a more accurate way to the, to determine the traffic generation, correct?
I don't know if that language says that it would permit you necessarily, it would permit, um, ma- maybe the applicant to come in with that if there was another standard. Um, and I don't know of a standard that is sort of universally accepted by that. You've talked about studies, but it's not, for instance, like DOT puts out regulations that say, "Use, use this manual or this manual," where you'd have a choice. My knowledge, they don't.
Not for ITE trip generation. Uh, Connecticut DOT specifically only utilizes ITE trip generation. There are some instances where they will require or will ask you to use a different rate if ITE trip generation does not provide enough.
Excuse me, again?
A little closer.
Please pull it closer.
My apologies. Um, Connecticut DOT uses- Connecticut DOT uses exclusively ITE trip generation manual. However, when there are instances where there is no particular land use code to define a particular development, Connecticut DOT will provide you with some guidance what to do or what to, what kind of numbers to use. To your point, you've quoted Pennsylvania as having other documentation. It's not just Pennsylvania that has that. For example, New Jersey utilizes their own trip generations and rates and percentages and peak hours for a multitude of different types of developments. It's just that within Connecticut, they're utilizing ITE trip generation manual for this particular type of land use.
And I appreciate that. I just think that there are, unbeknownst to me, there seems to be some debate, particularly with respect to warehouses and the types of warehouses that are at issue in this particular application, as to whether the ITE is in fact the most accurate manual or source under these circumstances. And I think our regulations at least allow us some wiggle room in that respect. I don't think it says that we have to use the ITE if there's a more, if we determine that there's a more accurate source. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Other commission members before I go out to the public?
Yes, Mr. Parent.
I just have a few comments that I'd like to make, if I may.
Yeah, I recognize.
Okay. Listening to the two commissioners, we've been talking here for a while, and I really, I don't want to say the word is confused, but maybe puzzled or perplexed, because we have something in which is a nominal 400,000 square, 400,000 square foot warehouse, and which use the IT, the ITE, it works out. But then we raise the question, is it really, is it really a 400,000 square foot warehouse? Yeah, I mean, you build a warehouse on 400 square, 400,000 square feet, but the volume, you know, or the height, it suggests it's really a multi, it's essentially a multi-story warehouse. And it has, and if you had actually solid floors, then you'd be having maybe multiples of that. It could be 400,000, 800,000, 12,000, or more actual floor space. But this is where you have virtual floor spaces, that you have the use of that because you're stacking your goods up so high. So when, and so I'm wondering if the ITE really does apply, if there's a different methodology that you have to use when your nominal 400,000 square foot warehouse is actually much larger. And what makes the, and the concerning part is, though, you know, we find we don't know who the tenant's going to be, we don't know what they're going to store, how they're going to, you know, how they're going to utilize this thing, what the hours of operations are. It seems that we don't have a target to shoot at. We don't have a, you know, I can't say, well, this is what it's going to be, when I think everybody agrees we really don't know what it's going to be. And I think there would be, you know, I would have a tough time explaining to somebody else approving this project. Why'd you do this? Well, it's 400,000, 1,000 square feet. Yeah, but you don't know. With all these things that, you know, you say you don't know, and we certainly don't know. So it would seem to me that you'd have to, you know, if you wanted to do this or to provide the confidence that a commissioner could vote on the project, you'd have to, you'd have to be far more detailed in your plans. I mean, I know you've done a lot of work, but I think there's much more detail that's required. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would the applicant like to respond to that?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that, because again, you know, we designed the project based upon your regulations. And if your regulations said that if you're over a certain height, then you have to count it as X number more square footage for your calculations, that would get to lots of things, like, you know, Floria ratios and things like that. I mean, it's not a floor, but under your analysis, Commissioner, but it's, you're thinking of it as a virtual floor, right? And your regs don't talk about that. I mean, they could, but they don't. And so it's sort of like a what if. You know, whether, whether a tenant would use all of that square footage up the 40 feet, again, would depend on their specific needs. I mean, I've got a warehouse approved in New Haven, not as big as this admittedly, but not as, nowhere near as big a site, and two buildings, about 50,000 square feet each, small parcel, all tractor trailers in and out of it. And, you know, there's users, there's people that, you know, they fill up that space, and they're high. I mean, they go up 40 feet. There's no question about it. So I think that, you know, it's an interesting question, but I think in the context of the regulations, it's not something that really, you know, sort of can be addressed or addressed in this. So I think we've tried to follow exactly the regulations and to give you all the information that we have that fits the regulations.
Thank you.
You good, Mr. Parent? Okay. Any other commission members? At this point in time, we'll go out to the public. Can I have a raise of hands of members of the public who would like to speak, make comments on the application? So I'm going to start with the right side of the auditorium, then we're going to move to the left. So again, on the right side, we'll start with this gentleman. Other people that would like to speak on the application from the right side? Sir, I saw you, okay, you'll be next. You're up, sir. And again, please, your name and address.
Yes. My name is Joe Heron. I live at 206 High Hill Road. I've been a resident of Wallingford for 50 years. And I've been at the 206 resident for, oh, I'm going to say about 42 years. But I've been at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. I think this is the third try for this type of application. And pardon my cynicism, but the first, as the, oh, by the way, the bright spot of this whole thing is this commission. And I continue to attend these type of hearings. But in any way, the first application, as you know, was for 1.1 million square feet. And I believe the second one, application with Amazon, was less than that, but I can't remember. So this is the third try, and it seems to me, again, pardon my cynicism, but it seems to me, this try is really a strategy to bypass a special permit, right? Because my understanding is a special permit is not needed in this case. So what they did is, I think what is apparent, is go to a smaller square foot area, and by doing so, they could later get it approved, because there's no special permit, but at a later time, apply for additional warehouse. And, you know, you add them up, and you're going to be up to 1.1 million square feet. I have attended the inland wetlands commission last meeting, and I asked the question, well, why do they want an additional 11.8 square foot area? And the response to me from a member of the Water Commission is that, well, they want a bigger warehouse. So that just tells me, it's a pretty deceitful thing, and you wonder why the public at large is cynical of our governments, not this committee. But I'm very impressed with Mr. Commissioner Roderick Coak, and also Fitzsimmons, who was instrumental in, it seems, getting the first application. On the basis of traffic, it's always traffic. And now it, the discussion tonight and every other application has been traffic. And, well, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the gentleman in the back.
Bob DeMayo, Marie Lane in Wallingford. I appreciate the opportunity.
Sir, if you could speak up just a little bit louder, maybe bring the microphone a little bit closer to you.
Yeah. Bob DeMayo, Marie Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments this evening. It sounds like my correspondence was received and folks have read it, which is great. I obviously have concerns about this development, this proposal. I think the traffic, the truck traffic in particular, is an issue. I think the fact that you guys, not to repeat what you guys have discussed very well, but not knowing what the true use of this site is going to be, is not fair that you're having to make a call on this. Frankly, if they can't explain what's going in, you don't know what's, who's going in. What you have to go by is the size of the building, the number of parking spots, the number of truck spaces. And all of those add up to much more than 82 trips per hour, and certainly not 750 daily trips. I mean, there's 500 cars, 200 truck spaces. They come in and out once a day, you're at 1,400 trips. So this, the math just simply doesn't work. That's what I would say relative to the 100 trips. And there is, there are other measures, more accurate measures, to Commissioner Heinze's point, well articulated. There's actually something called passenger car equivalents that's used by the Federal Highway Administration. It's used in other countries, and it gives ratings to vehicles. A car is very different than a truck. A truck could be the equivalent of three or four cars. So while your regulations talk about vehicles, 100 vehicles, unfortunately, it isn't specific to say, you know, that a truck operates very differently than a car. Maybe that's something in the future that could change. But I know the intent of having 100 is to take care and be careful with traffic and protecting the safety of residents. And if you do the math on, you know, what the applicant has presented, and you looked at, let's call it passenger car equivalents, you'd be well in excess of 80 trips, peak trips per hour. So I wanted to make that point. Two other real quick points. Loading docks, it's been asked before, but your regulations state very clearly, loading docks to be located inside or rear yards. And if those side or rear yards are visible in a public right of way, that you can request screening. Entire front of the warehouses, all warehouses, that is the front of the warehouse. Lastly, I wanted to talk about outside storage. You know, this commission, the public, town staff spent a lot of time working on those watershed interchange district changes, and I don't disagree, they fell short, unfortunately. There was some really good work, we just didn't get it to where it needed to be. But there was, there was some specific language and things put in around outside storage. Outside storage was, was allowed previously in the IX zone. This is now the watershed interchange district. It does not allow outside storage. There's 15 other uses in this zone. Warehouses, warehousing happens to be one of them. When we were talking about these new regs, the warehousing that people, we were thinking of was food bank warehousing, not Amazon warehousing, with tractor trailers, many stories high, and 500-plus parking spots. That is exactly what we were not looking for. In fact, if you look at the definition of the, of the zone, it says, "The purpose is protecting the town's drinking water while allowing low-intensity uses." Think food bank, not Amazon. And I will just say, this application is a replica of what was put forth in 2018, one of the two warehouses, virtually exact. At that time, in 2018, the attorney, Mr. Sanaviva, was asked about the applicant. They didn't have an applicant then, as you may remember. And what did he say? I'll tell you what he said. He said, at the October 10 meeting, he said, "I recognize this looks like a development for an Amazon, Google-type business." And then he said on November 14th, he said, "When talking about hours of operation, this is not a," quote unquote, "this is not a tenant-driven operation. It's based on e-commerce." Same building. So I think you need to be aware of that. So, you know, I will just say, storage, going back to the storage, your regulations call out storage and define it as merchandise, supplies, machinery, metal containers, and trailers. They've got spot for 96 trailers that are away from the building, that I would say is storing the trailers. If those trailers are loaded with merchandise, then that is also disallowed. So you can't have storage for trailers, you can't have merchandise being stored. So whether they're empty or full, it's not allowed per the watershed interchange district. I guess the last thing I would say relative to that is, Mr., I think it was Mr. Checkaway that came up, when you asked about the use, who are you looking for? What type tenant? He said, well, someone that needs a warehouse or, quote unquote, trailer storage spaces. You cannot store trailers in this district. We took it out for a reason, to protect the watershed. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. We could just, everybody, please hold your applause till the end. I'd certainly appreciate that. Now, on the left, okay, we'll take this, take the young lady in the back, and then, sir, you'll be next.
My name is Joan DeBisquali. I live on Barnes Road, and my backyard is just a stone's throw from the Claire property. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has had said tonight. I sent in a correspondence, which I assume all of you gentlemen have read, and I'm just going to say, after listening to the presentation tonight, that Claire is playing cat and mouse with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, sir, yes, you're next. And while he's coming up, again, anyone on the right side, has everyone on the right side commented? That would like to comment?
My name is Robert Kozelowski, 117 Thorpe Avenue of Wallingford. Just want you to know, I was in the trucking industry for 40 some odd years. I delivered to CNS warehouses, Amazon, from Connecticut, Western Mass, New Hampshire, and Vermont. I've been to them all. That is the same footprint up there as all those buildings. And I never, ever delivered to them without waiting one to two hours to back into that dock. And if you take and go to any of these food warehouses, or any of these warehouses, when it's raining out, and go in the back where they're holding trucks and the trailers, go look at the water. It's got a slight blue color to it. You know what the water blue is from? Oil. Every truck sitting out there will drip oil. When it rains, now you've got an oil bath. Where's that going? Or they have a certain area in a watershed to put it in a tank, to now take that out every so many months and came it out? Because now you're going to bring water, oil, into the soil, into the watershed. I know, I've been doing it for 40 years. I've been to many, many food warehouses, Amazons, and everything else. You never can go to these places and back up to that dock. You've got one to two-hour wait, no matter when you go, and you've got 40, 50, 60 trucks sitting there waiting to back in. And food warehouses, you've got refers and everything else running. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move now to the, more toward the center. We'll start with this young lady in the orange and move on.
Hi, Jen Frichette, Valley View Drive. Thank you to everybody sitting up there who's been working so hard for so many years to prevent this. I am too frustrated that the regulation changes. I am too frustrated that the regulation changes did not set us up for better success. My concerns are the same, 24/7 operation, so many tractor-trailer trucks coming and going, all of those noises that are approved by OSHA that we're going to be hearing day and night. We also know, as Bob mentioned, that this is one of the two warehouses they originally proposed. There's nothing from stopping them coming back and proposing the second warehouse. They could also subdivide the property, and then we're stuck again. You know, I think everybody knows that this is part, phase one of two, whatever that phase two is going to be, we don't know. And it's just, it's really scary. And I hope that you vote no for this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And again, looking on this right side, yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Steve Backless, and I'm also from Valley View Drive. I know initially, there was talk about the Class A. Class A, from what I did a quick Google search on, says minimum 13 meters, which is 42 feet, and that's just the inside, it doesn't include the outside, the chillers that will be on the roof and everything else. It's going to be very noisy. We discussed that a little bit, but nobody ever mentioned anything about pollution from all the trucks sitting there idling and doing whatever. It's going to cause a hazard there. Traffic is already congested. There was a warehouse that's been put in in Meriden on Murdock Avenue for a distribution center. Yale's putting in a cancer thing on Northup Road as well. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on there. But the other main thing that I had read on the patch in Wallingford is, the state of Connecticut gave Wallingford $487,000 to purchase land on Williams Road to protect the McKenzie Reservoir, which is fed by the Muddy River, which is adjacent to this property. And whatever, I don't know what they're going to do to prevent that from contaminating it, but it just seems anti, what the purpose of the grant was, to protect the reservoir for the town of Wallingford's people.
Thank you, sir. Other people on the, yes.
Hi, I'm Holly McNabola, I'm 90 High Hill Road. And I just find it very concerning that there was kind of a very quick response to the noise that is produced by that area for the folks who are on High Hill Road. It hadn't been thought about, which means there hasn't been a lot of thought, in my opinion, given to the residents of High Hill Road. And just another thing that you all need to be aware of, all the traffic rules and all that is all well and good, but I've been running with my dog on a High Hill Road and almost got hit by a tractor trailer on High Hill Road. And that's from the Amazon warehouse that's in Meriden. So, if, you know, it's kind of illogical to think that somebody who's not from the area might not take a wrong turn, end up on High Hill Road where there's a huge pedestrian community, dogs, runners, families, and this is what we're setting ourselves up for. So, I just ask you to consider that in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Alight Cockford, 35 Whiffle Tree Road. Thank you for taking all our comments. I have a couple of questions and then two comments, three questions. So, one thing is, I am trying to follow the regulations, and I just want to make sure, what I find online on the website, and it has listed April 12th, 22nd, 2022, that is the newest edition, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, one question, I couldn't really understand this. There are a lot of specific definitions in Section 410, the watershed interchange, but freight terminals and drop yards, as far as I could see, were not defined. So, my question is, what exactly differentiates the warehousing from the freight terminal? Because I think the number of parking spaces is the same.
Okay. Mr. Bajini, would you please enlighten everyone?
So, that was actually a suggestion from Mr. Hein at the workshop.
Well, it doesn't matter who the suggestion was, if you could please--
But, I don't know if you could clarify what he was saying there. And then, we specifically defined parcel sorting and retail distribution to prohibit that use in that zone. So, I think we felt at the time, at the workshop, that, I guess, excluding freight terminals and drop yards, instead of having to define every type of warehouse that could possibly exist, I believe that's where we ended up during the discussion. I have a memo from Mr. Hein stating this, so I don't know why he wants to blame us now for doing this, but I would like an explanation.
I don't think I ever suggested that we get rid of full definitions. I think what my suggestion was, we started off with two definitions for warehousing. And the only difference was freight yards and, or drop yards and freight something, and freight terminals or something. And I think my suggestion was, rather than just repeat everything, that you just make clear that one is warehousing without freight terminals, and the other was warehousing with freight terminals. That's my recollection. I don't recall ever suggesting that we get rid of full definitions. And in fact, I think it's a problem that we don't have definitions of warehousing, and we don't have definitions of freight yards and drop yards. It would probably be helpful to have those. Although, my understanding is that we do, the default is to go to the Webster's Dictionary, so I do have those definitions, but I do not believe that my suggestion was ever to get rid of full definitions. I think I was trying to clarify that, or make our definitions a little more efficient so that they were clearer for people reading them.
Well, I recall speaking with you on the phone and clarifying--
Yeah, I think we're getting at the discussion between the two gentlemen. The young lady had a question, and I'm not sure, was your question answered or not?
Not quite. And I didn't mean to blame anyone for having a definition or not. I really just tried to understand what the difference is, because freight terminals are not allowed, but from all I hear, the way this is designed and the number of trucking, parking spots, and loading bays, and parking, it looks very much like a freight terminal. And as long as we don't have a tenant and we don't know the use, how can we approve something that might be a freight terminal? I think that was where I wanted to get to.
Okay.
Just a few other small items. The watershed interchange district, the new amendment, as far as I could see, is not listed in Section 31A, where all the different uses are listed. There seems to be an omission on page 79, after 410D9, that actually refers to 4.10E, and I couldn't find any 4.10E at all. And then, there's one other small thing. Section 618, Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, still talks about the New Haven County Soil and Water Conservation District. I don't know if that's still a thing, or is it a Southern Regional Conservation District? So, basically, where I want to go is, I feel like the watershed interchange district is a great amendment, but as other speakers have said, it's, it has a lot of shortcomings. So, I think this application, which falls into that district, basically, why we did the, or why you did the amendment, this application should not be approved tonight unless these issues are fixed. Number two, I was trying to understand why this has not received a special permit. With all that we heard before, the trip generation is a big discussion. Trying to find the right spot. Give me a second. According to Section 6.10, there could be a special permit requested for excavation and filling, and there is quite a lot of excavation and filling going on on that site, 60 feet excavation on one end, 40 foot retaining, 40 foot retaining wall on the other end. That is a lot of excavation and filling. And then, according to Section 6.11H, Off-Street Parking and Loading Facilities, warehousing requires, oh, let me make sure one more time that I have the right version of the zoning regulations. So, anybody of you has a printed version in front of you?
Excuse me, could you please just talk a little slower, if you would, please?
Okay, sure. Does anybody has, have a printed version of the regulations in front of you? Because I was only working from the online.
Sure.
So, is there a page 184?
Mr. Bajini, it's--
I'm on page 181. Was she talking about the trip generation table?
Yes.
Yeah, Allison told us to take that out a long time ago, because it's very, very, very outdated. That may be something we need to look at.
So, right now, it's still in there?
Yes.
And it still says warehousing generates 1.6 per 1,000 square foot peak hour vehicle trips?
I guess, but it also says that the most recent ITE manual must be used, so I don't even know really what--
Or, or a more accurate. But, but then, the regulation itself lists 1.6 per 1,000 square foot, which with 450,000 square foot would be 720 peak hour trips. Or if you take the 10,000 office space off, still way over 700 peak hour trips. Anywhere between the 70 or 80 that the developer proposes and the 700, we don't know what the peak hour trips are. And so, I wonder how, can you approve something that we don't know? The presentation also mentioned the plan of conservation and development. The plan of conservation and development also asks to reduce impervious cover in the watershed and to, to use low-impact development. This application does neither. It increases drastically the impervious cover, and it also does use minimal, if at all, any kind of low-impact development, or any green infrastructure. It's all centralized in one humongous retention basin. If that ever fails, I don't want to see what's going to happen there. And then, two, so there are a few other things, small items. I already mentioned the freight terminal issue. Landscaping, I heard, has been revised, so I'll skip that. But in my opinion, this application should not, either not be decided tonight or not be approved tonight. A general comment, it has been mentioned before that this warehouse still looks very much like an Amazon warehouse, and I just wanted to bring that up on the table. Amazon itself, and I guess a lot of other online retailers or warehouse companies, is scrapping plans and openings of warehouses all throughout the country. 22 facilities totaling almost 25 million square feet of usable space. The company has delayed opening an additional 21 locations totaling nearly 28 million square feet, according to a consulting firm that tracks the Amazon business, excuse me. So, you could say, "Well, that's a developer's problem, not ours." Well, actually, I think it is ours, because we would approve an empty shell, hoping it would bring in tax revenue, which we don't know, if it ever will. But what we do know is that both the construction and operation, if it happens, will risk our And then, to that point, we all know that the weather is not what it used to be, and it's only going to get worse. According to the Connecticut Climate Assessment Report, major storms will happen up to four times as often in the future. A UConn professor describes how, quote, "A storm the size of which we might expect to see once every 20 years could happen as much as four times as often by the year 2050." So, any major gigantic retention basin, is that still going to be enough to protect our water? The reason for the recent amendment was the watershed protection. And I think the way this project is designed does not do it right. Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much for taking comments.
Good enough, thank you. Again, on this side of the auditorium, anyone else on the right side or your left side of the ball? Okay, moving over. Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Gray, and I live at 14 Oxford Trail in the Spring Lake neighborhood. And I thank you for the opportunity for letting us speak. I don't know, I wrote down a bunch of notes, but I think the first thing that comes to mind is, I think what we're looking at is the devil is wearing a new dress. And we've been through this dance before, and I appreciate the work that the council people, that you folks have done, in listening to the data that's presented and listening to the heartfelt testimony that citizens present. And I believe, most importantly, following your conscience. You know, I live on, my wife and I live on Spring Lake, and we hear these stories about how Spring Lake used to be swimmable, and people had the beach and things like that. And the first version of the devil came along in the guise of Bristol Myers. And when that facility was created, it flooded the heck out of the Muddy River. It silted up, the silt all ran downstream, and the first basic impoundment was our nice little neighborhood lake, which now has less water than it does silt in most parts of that lake. Our little dock, I've scraped away 18 inches of silt to see like what the substrata was originally. You can't swim in it, you can't walk in it. If you're in a canoe and you tip over, you're in big trouble. The bottom line of the story is, when these, when the acts of Mother Nature do what they do, you can't go back. There's no going back. We're never going to get that lake back. That lake is gone. So, that happened because that, this very same property was developed in an aggressive manner. So, nowadays, we're 40 years later, and we have better technology and better oversight, but still, why are we tempting with this? This, this project? Why are we tempting fate? And this is just on a generic level. I'm also thinking about the levels of pollution that are going to be emanating from this site and the access to and from it. Light pollution, water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution. You know, a tenant that I like to adhere to as a citizen of a community, Wallingford, I'm proud to live in Wallingford. I love Wallingford. I think Wallingford's done a great job protecting the rights-- I think Wallingford's done a great job protecting the rights and the quality of life in of our citizens. So we as citizens don't want our quality of life to decline. Why would we want our quality of life to decline? Why would you want your health to decline? At least let's keep it the way it is. We should be striving to make it better. So why do we want to tempt having it go downhill? Trying to get out onto Route 68 from Williams, we have two rush hours a day. Rush hours now are about three hours each. So that's six hours a day. When you're trying to get through that intersection, you're screwed. You could be sitting at that stoplight, that stop sign for, you know, just sitting there for five minutes. We have four on-off ramps right up the road past Research on 91. And during those, that six-hour rush hour period, morning and night, those things are at their max now. And the little sign I was walking around with before, one truck per 36 seconds, let's just add that and see how nice it gets. How's that going to treat our quality of life? It's going to, people are going to want to move away from there. We attended hearings on this. This is the third round, and I was really astonished that the Inland Wetland Commission approved this. I mean, I was absolutely astonished. They were not looking out for the quality of our streams and our water. That that was just a farce. And I don't think I really need to say much more about that. And the prior citizen commented on rainfall data. You know, we have the rainfall data that the studies were reviewing at the Inland Wetlands Commission hearings were inordinately, they were terrible. It was ironic because I think three days before that last hearing, we had like a seven-inch rainfall or something. And that would have overridden the retention ponds and the system that they had in place. And that was just three days before that hearing. So soil erosion, sediment control, water runoff, those are big problems. And when that happens, it affects us downstream. And you know, a good way to look at things is we're all downstream. That's how everybody should look at this. Everybody is downstream from this. We don't want it. And we trust. We trust on you guys. We rely on you to to do what's right for the citizens of Wallingford. We're first. Not tax base, not corporate interests, not governmental needs. The citizens, we should be the priority. And I believe the consensus of the citizens on this project is a big fat no. The devil's got a whole new dress.
Thank you, sir. Other members, yes, gentleman in the back with the hat.
Good evening. Ed Bradley, New Hampton Trail. I didn't have any prepared comments because I was under the impression that since this wasn't a special permit, there would be no public comment. I guess I was wrong.
Well, Mr. Bradley, I think if you watched all of our meetings, I think you know that whether it's a special permit or not, we always give the public the opportunity to comment on on applications. Whether it's obviously a special permit, we need to do that. But I think we've had a very long history of site plans. We've allowed people to to comment, so you don't watch our show enough. But again, Mr. Bradley, please continue.
Yeah. Question for the chairman. If this gets voted on tonight, who are your voting commissioners?
It's the five commission members.
Who would that be?
It would be Mr. Cohen, Mr. Fitzsimmons, Mr. Vanoyt, Mr. Allinson, and myself.
And Mr., is it priest? Is it? Is he an alternate?
Yes, Mr. Parent's an alternate and Mr. Heinz is an alternate.
Okay. I got it, I'm going to go back to the inland wetlands meeting. I know you don't deal with that, but.
But if you could please, I understand you like to do that, but if you could focus more on on this application.
No, I will, I will. You know my concerns.
Yes.
From there. But at that meeting, only five voted. One of the members only sat there for a couple of those meetings during that special permit public hearing. The other member that came in to allow to vote attended zero. I know they watch the TV.
Yeah, again, Mr. Bradley, that's for this, this meeting, that's irrelevant as far as with the, please let me continue, as far as with inland wetlands, the members that were there, the members that were not there, it's quite possible that, you know, if a member attended only one meeting and there were multiple meetings, it's quite possible that individual could have reviewed all of the information that was presented, could have reviewed the, you know, the video of that meeting and felt whoever that person may or may not have been felt that they were fully prepared to vote on that application. So again, what transpired at the inland wetlands meeting is irrelevant here.
Okay. But I will comment in that I find it ironic. I know Mr. Simmons requested it, that the town attorney submitted a letter. And from what I heard, the town attorney, I got to go back to inland wetlands, submitted also a letter to them. In my opinion, the big push behind this is the Economic Development Commission, which doesn't care about the aquifer, the wetlands, or the WPA. I'm sure the mayor is behind it, and now the town attorney is behind it. Something doesn't sit right. As far as water testing, you heard from the health director. As far as people should get their wells tested for a baseline, that's true. When I talked with the water division, I asked them, where do they test the water coming off that site, coming down the muddy river? And the reply was they test it at inlet to Mackenzie Reservoir. It's not tested upstream. And again, I believe you are the erosion board or erosion in flood control board. It has all your members listed on it. Am I correct?
Say that again, please.
You have another board that's the erosion.
The aquifer protection.
Aquifer protection, right. But again, I don't know what meetings you do have. But the town continues to ignore the downstream flooding. They keep building and building and building up in that area. And they totally ignore downstream. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Any other members from the public who'd like to comment on the application? Well, there's some other people that like to comment and anyone other than this young lady and the other young lady like another bite at the apple? Yes. We'll go to, sir, yeah, we'll take her, then we'll go to you next.
Hi, I'm Sonia Wolf, Oxford Trail. And like the others, I just want to thank you guys so much. I have so much respect. I've also been at the previous meetings and I, yeah, I can't say enough for all the work that's put in and I'm grateful. And I guess I have a couple of comments, you know, David Parent said, you know, he's just so succinctly kind of, like, how can, how can the number of trips be based on like this square footage of the ground when we're talking about vertical space and almost virtual floors? It was just so simple, but I think my head was trying to wrap around it like this just doesn't add up. This doesn't add up. And and then that made it add up. I, there's no doubt in my mind that, you know, they're trying to get under the 100 so that they don't have to, you know, trip a permit. That's, you know, Ray Charles could see that. So, you know, here we are. And everyone has talked about the traffic. And even though there's going to be a traffic, you know, it would bring a traffic report, you know, that everyone have to be approved by the state and all of that. All you have to do is live on that side of town. I remember this in a previous, you know, this, when we came here the last time, the character of the town was brought into into question. And that was one of the, one of the conditions, like to look at when approving or disapproving, does it change or is it in line with the character of the town? I can say 100% that this is going to change the character of the east side of town. There is just no way around it, no matter what is said. And, you know, the this amount of increase in traffic, we already are maxed out. We've already said that. We see the tractor trailers stuck on the corners too. How on earth, I mean, it'd have to be an imbecile to think it's not going to make it worse. And like it was said, and we've said it before, we're not trying to make things minimally worse. We want to make things better in life, you know? We live in Wallingford because we like it. We want it to be better. We don't want it to be gradually going downtown and we're trying to stave it off. So, you know, you can't change it. It's one of those things that, you know, once the horse has left the barn, you know, and then we go back, you know, 10 years from now and say, oh, well, the regulations, you know, they had changed the regulations and that didn't, you know, it wasn't the right thing to do. And meanwhile, we have this, you know, pollution, polluter and a mess for someone else to handle. And I guess, you know, I just hope you, you know, I hope you vote no. I give you, I give you a lot of courage and I know you're, I know you're studying it real hard. I know you'll do the right thing.
No, thank you. And sir, I believe you're up next.
Jerry Lombardo, 18 Oxford Trail. I'm not a scientist, but thinking about this project, a building that's being described, 100 trucks, 500 cars, they must have a tremendous amount of weight. And I only wonder if this added weight will affect the aquifer that's nearby. And to comment on what the lady said, I recently had someone come to my house at 18 Oxford Trail, which sits on Spring Lake, and they said, wow, it's amazing. You live out in the country. We never knew there was a lake here. It's beautiful. Well, instead of my saying to friends, well, I live near a beautiful lake, I'd be saying to them, oh, to find me, I live near the depot. We don't want that, really. And like I say, I'm not a scientist, but I only wonder if the tremendous weight added by this project will affect the aquifer that's below it. You know, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but it just makes me wonder, you know?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak on the application? I'm getting to you, but I want to see if other people. Yes, sir. And after this gentleman, anyone else who has not spoken yet, please raise your hand that would like to speak.
I'm Scott McCaffrey from Cliffside Drive. I just to reiterate what's already been said tonight, this is, you know, the third time we're coming back. And at a, and what is being proposed, I had a minimum is a huge, very big, very busy warehouse. It's going to generate, even according to the proposal, you know, 80 truck trips, you know, per hour. That's a, you know, a ton of traffic. And I just think if anything else was proposed, I mean, I certainly am not anti-business and we have, you know, a beautiful hotel across the street there, food distribution center. I just think we would just love to see, you know, come back with something else, just about anything else. I, this is seems like just about the worst thing that could be proposed. This huge, busy warehouse with trucks going in and out, you know, all hours of the day, generating tons of traffic. So that was just, you know, just my comment.
Thank you, sir. And I believe this young lady would like to speak one more time, and this will be the last member of the public? Yes, you.
Just, so Alight Copf for 35 Riffletree Road. Thank you for take, giving me a couple more minutes. Just in case I haven't made that clear, I do think this should be a special permit application and trigger a regular traffic impact analysis, not just a traffic overview, which, by the way, in on the last page, the one dated November 2nd, still mentions the IX interchange district. Just just throwing that out there. But the question I actually wanted to to put out, once I heard the Spring Lake community talk or neighborhood talk, I think section four point 12 point H asks for a watershed analysis down to the point where the site is only 10% of the watershed. I have not seen such an analysis in the materials that I looked at this morning in the, in the town planner's office. And I was wondering if you could still request that or if that can be provided. So at least we know how will this project actually affect the people living downstream? Thank you.
Mr. Pajini, could you answer that, please?
I did speak with the town engineer. She was out today, but I had her look at every part of four point 12, but I will have her specifically answer that question.
Okay. Okay, with this, I'll bring it back to the, certainly back to the applicant. Certainly you've heard comments from the public, obviously comments from the commission, and I'm sure you would like to make some additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would. I'm not going to address all the points raised by the public. They they have every right to express their opinions. It's it's really nice that this commission allows public comment at site plan. You're one of probably the few that that do that. I think there's a big distinction between the prior applications. The first one was for a million square feet, over twice what this application is. The Amazon application, which was, you know, they came in as a potential buyer of the site, and they came in for the, you know, over 500, I think it was for for that. They clearly triggered the the special permit, and that's and that's a different review. And there's a lot of things that have to come into that review, as you know, from that. When your regulations changed and you set a threshold for these types of warehouses that would be treated as a site plan, it is a different review. There's a couple of things that a couple of commissioners raised that I did want to address for you, though. A question about the fire marshal. Now, the fire marshal looks at the plan at this point as a site plan to determine if there's proper access for, you know, police and fire vehicles. There's a question raised about like, you know, the building height. When building plans are submitted for a building permit, clearly the fire marshal's department is going to look at, do those plans comply with the state building code? If there's special things that have to be put in place because of the height to deal with fire issues, that's that's in the code and that would have to obviously be incorporated when they're at, you know, at that point. So I think that that, you know, it's a legitimate concern. Fire is always a concern in any building and, but that's addressed when you come in for a building permit. I think also, one of the things, there was some criticism of the of the wetlands commission. And I have to say, I mean, I wasn't the lead to turn on that, but I was watching a lot of what went on. And I think they really did a very complete review. I know that the environmental consultant planner of the town gets into great detail. I know that the town planner was part of the town engineer as well. There was a lot of review, and the focus really was to try to ensure, and in fact, I think we've succeeded in the design, to make sure that all the existing wetlands and water caches are protected or we're staying out of them and that the whole stormwater system that's put in place is designed to ameliorate the effects of vehicles coming in and out of the site, because that's the biggest thing. One of the things also that your watershed protected, watershed protection area district talks about is wanting larger roofs and smaller parking areas. Because with a roof, one, you know, you're just collecting rainwater, and that rainwater gets collected and can be. know, you're just collecting rainwater, and that rainwater gets collected and can be infiltrated into the ground, so you're, you know, you're protecting that water source. A roof on this size structure does that. So I think that's, that was important in, in the review, not just for the wetlands and watercourses and the water quality, but also in trying to comply with the watershed protection area. So I think that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about other standards for, for traffic, the only standard that, you know, is clearly enunciated in the regulations and is in fact accepted by Conda, which ultimately has to deal with off-site, is the IT, and that's what we've looked at. So I think that's, that's really the, the reg that we have to go with, the standard we have to go with. I know that doesn't necessarily make everybody happy, but I only can go with what's, what's available. Also, in your record, you don't have, you know, any other report or any other position from town staff or anyone else that says, you know, this standard was used and this is what occurred. So I think that's important when you're doing your review. I think we've, we've gone through an exhauster review through wetlands, we've gone through a lot of work with staff, which is exactly what you do on a site plan, to make sure that everything detailed is, is nailed down. And we've tried to answer all your questions, I know the issue of, you know, not having an actual tenant name, but, I mean, there's lots of developments that go on, I mean, historically, that, for instance, retail developments that come in, they don't necessarily say who they have coming in, they don't know what they'll have yet. And, you know, they're not subject to a, sort of an inquiry as, you know, who's the tenant going to be? They say, okay, what's your square footage, plug it into the IT, what's going to be your trip generation? You know, retail, depending on what you have, or a doctor's office, you know, a small doctor's office in the center of town, in theory, can generate a lot of traffic, although now, who knows, with, you know, virtual, you know, doctor's visits, maybe they don't anymore. So, I mean, this is something that is evolving, and I think that, you know, we've come in with a project that complies with your regulations, we would ask that you approve it. As I said before, we'd gone through the, the conditions from the town planner, we felt all those were completely reasonable and doable, we can do all those. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir. I guess I go back to the, the commission to see how we would like to proceed with the application. Any comments? Gentlemen? Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm never at a loss for words. This has been, it's 10:35, I, I asked, you know, about the timing, because I wasn't sure if, if we had time. This is a lot to digest, this is the first time for me that these applicant, this applicant is in front of us. I, I, just one person, I would like to continue and to vote in December, is my personal, I just have some things I'd like to review further, but this is, there's a lot of information presented. I defer to the majority, but my preference would be to continue to December.
Let, let me ask you this, Mr. Fitzsimmons, and other, no, but other, other commission members, is there any additional information? I know you'd certainly like to review the information, I suspect probably most commission members would like to absorb what was, you know, discussed here this evening. Is there anything else, or any additional information that you'd like from, I guess from the applicant perhaps, from the staff, any clarification on, on issues? And again, it's not just you, it's commission members.
Yeah, very fair. I, I guess, I guess in reference to some of the issues that were raised by the commission and by the public, I appreciate the applicant reviewing and deciding if they prefer, if they could provide some comments. I realize some of it is, you know, the issue of special permits, site plan, but I think, like, for example, there was some issues raised that I just, I, I would like the applicant to take time to clarify, you know, at, at the next meeting, personally. I, I, and I'm thinking of, one issue might be related to, like, I asked about the building orientation, others talked about the loading docks, our site plan doesn't, site plan requirements don't, don't, site plan doesn't require it, but I'd like to see an architectural. That's a request, not a requirement. That's an example of something I would like to see in relation to issues that were raised. So, just one example for me.
Other commission members? Any comments? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Me personally, I'm ready to act on this tonight. I do have, you know, a lot more comments, little different than, you know, what has been expressed by, you know, some of the commissioners and, and some of the public. So for me, you know, I can either, if we're going to continue this, I can save these comments for next meeting, again, I'm, I'm ready to act on this. I, I could talk to these requirements now and let the applicant know what I'm thinking, but I don't think it's going to, you know, change things. They may have time to, you know, argue my argument about, you know, whether this fits into our regulations, but I'm, I'm happy to do that now. There are several comments that, if we do act on this tonight, from the Scott Shipman, senior engineer, that, you know, Mr. Peggini said to, you know, make these conditions of approval, I think there's some significant items in there that probably should be discussed here, but I, I won't get into that right now. The one item that Mr. DeMayo brought up, which I was not aware of, and I'm, I'm glad he did, and would like some clarification on this, was the, I believe it was 96 storage trailers. You know, I was under the impression that, you know, that was just temporary parking while, you know, goods removed, and it, it sounds like it, it, it could be, you know, a permanent storage area, so I'd kind of like some qualification on that, because they, as he mentioned, that is in our regulations, that, that's not supported. So, I can talk about my other comments.
Well, one, uh, I, I think, let's start with the, just, you had some questions on the storage, again, that was Mr. DeMayo's comments, his impression, these gentlemen may have something totally different, so if you'd like to address that or respond to it.
Yeah, I think Jeff could address that.
Yeah, Jeff Checkaway with Colair Properties, we don't have any intention to have a permanent outdoor storage with any of the tenant use.
Well, basically, you get, you have those 96 spots, you know, how, how long are --
Perhaps you should explain just exactly what those spots are for.
Is there a specific thing, and there, is there a specific notation in the regulation that states how long something can be there? I don't recall reading that.
As I read it, this is Chris Gagnon again, the regulations just state no, no outside storage, so it's a question of, is a trailer itself outside storage, or is storing something in a trailer, is then that trailer now inside or outside? It is circular.
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
Well, I, I guess, maybe the simple question is, you have those spots, what's the intention? Sure, you're not going to, you won't be able to answer because you don't have a tenant, so it's a little, I, I can understand people's frustration with that, because normally, you know, you would say, this is what it's going to be used for, and right now, candidly, you have no idea what it's going to be used for. Is that fair to say? I don't think it is.
Yes. I, I can make comments toward what other warehouse users have done, but I don't know that you want to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's just, that would just be speculation. Right. Well, before, Mr. Cohen, you have some additional comments, let's, let me ask other commission members how they'd like to proceed, and that may, other members, how would you like to proceed? It's not sugar, it's rug our shoulders here. I have a coin, if you'd like me to flip it.
I, I'm, I'm good with a coin flip, Mr. Chairman. I, I, honestly, I don't know that any additional information will change my readiness, I think that having more time to review the application of the materials would be helpful, but that being said, I don't know that it would change anything either, so I could really go either way, and I'm sorry, I'm not very helpful with that decision.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, before you go to JP, you know, with, with respect to Mr. Fitzsimmons' seniority, I, I will change my opinion and say, I'll, I'll wait until next month. I, I appreciate this.
All right, I, I appreciate, all right, I'll make it easy. I'll, I'll, I'll take you off the hook.
Yeah, thank you.
See how you don't want to flip a coin either. I, I think at this particular point in time, I think the commission would like a little bit more time to look at this. I would like, and it may be totally irrelevant, but, you know, we, it, it mentioned, and I think it's something I'd like you to look at, Mr. Peggini, as, as well as talk to our, 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 our engineer, and it comes back to the, you know, a more accurate source, if available, and I'd like at least that to be, you know, that to be looked at and considered and to evaluate, you know, it's on page 74, to evaluate that, to come up with, to see if, and you may have an answer already, but
I do.
I'd like you to, you know, talk to that with our engineer, and then the other thing that's, it is kind of troubling, and I fully understand what, and perhaps someone could even make the argument, when we talk about using, you know, another source, it's somewhat embarrassing, but when we look at, and I forget the page that the young lady had mentioned, where it talks about our 184, I can hear, you know, when it, when it talks about that, as far as what the
Yes.
You know, what the, the number is, as far as, for the, you know, for the trip generation. Again, I, I understand what the applicant's saying, I understand all of that, but, you know, our regulations say another source, and I'm looking at our book and it has another source. Now, that may or may not be relevant, but I'd like someone to look at that and come back with, you know, a, an opinion on that or an explanation on that, because that, I mean, it's, to me, it's an issue, it's, it's in our regulations, and we say alternate source or another source. Whether that makes sense or not, I have no clue, that's why I'd like some guidance on that. So with this, gentlemen, again, I'll give you the opportunity to make any, well, first we need your consent to
I consulted with Jeff.
Sorry, you can finish that.
Excuse me?
If you want to finish, that's fine, I, I think we kind of stepped on what you're, what you're
Oh, no, I just, I, I think just, first, I just, I think you folks would be, you would consent to continuing this, is this correct? To our next meeting?
Yes, I was, I was hoping to make a few more comments if this
Oh, no, well, no, well, no, I'll let you do that, I just wanted to, just to get that, and I'll let you gentlemen have an opportunity to, you make any final comments until we take a motion to continue this.
Yes, yes, I, I would agree to extension.
To the next meeting?
Yeah, to the next
The most we can give you, I think.
Yeah, exactly, I, I fully understand that. Now that we're over that hump, would you gentlemen like, before we continue this, would you gentlemen like to make any final comments?
I think Jeff Chahoy would like to make a comment.
Yep, first off, I'd like to try to understand additional comments that haven't been made. I, I don't want to put ourselves into a situation next hearing, sorry, next meeting, that there's a question that needs answering that we can't come up with, so I think it'd be fair if we were to, you know, if we're granting an extension to understand what those additional comments are, if possible, so we can do our level best to address those concerns in the next 30 days or less, and to work with town staff to, to meet those requirements. And, and in general, I just had a, a few more comments on this evening's proceedings and, and some questions that I had, I think, but, you know, we've, I've been before with Colair Properties, going back two applications ago for this site, and we were looking for two warehouses speculatively, we did not have a tenant at the time, whether or not people believed this or not, that's, that's the truth. Then we had an agreement with Amazon, who pursued their own permits, to which was a special permit, and, and, and obviously denied. So, as the applicant and part of the ownership group of this property, we're looking to come in with something that we can get approved. I think we got the message that a special permit will not get approved for this property, so we've shifted our strategy or plan to something that's within the regulations for site plan approval. We didn't come in here with a 500-plus thousand square foot warehouse that generated 99 trips per peak hour, we did it where we're at, I believe, 80, whatever the number is, we were leaving room, not for interpretation, but for knowing that IT is the only thing that, that we have here, and that we're not trying to cram the biggest possible thing on this site, and quite frankly, it's, it's frustrating that everyone's looking for, what seems to be looking for some other thing where they can say that our trip generation's over 100. That wasn't the intent of this project, like I said, we could have done something bigger, but we left a, is it 25% or 20% room for leeway, partially because we don't have a tenant. I will say that over past projects that I've developed over the last anywhere from one to eight, 10 years, I've never had a user that generated more than the IT data, you know, in fact, we've always had less, we've always constructed less loading docks than were proposed, we've had less, you know, trip generation. I know that we still don't have a tenant, and I know that's problematic, but we can't really do anything about that now. What I will say is that the level of approval in order to bring a tenant to this town is that we get site plan approval, we go to the building permit, building commissioner, building department to get a building permit, and we can construct this speculative building with no occupant. At some point, we're going to need a certificate of occupancy for this tenant, and in order to do that, we're going to have to meet every single requirement in the zone, in the building code, so this isn't a trick to get somebody else here, this is just us going through the steps that we can because we don't have a tenant. Now, at some point, there, there's going to be a review by the fire department, the building department, there's, we'll know, in order to get occupancy, we're going to have to know who the tenant is, and at that point, the, through the building permit and occupancy review, I believe it goes to the planning department, it goes through all the other departments in town to get a blessing or a checkmark, and we can't put a tenant in here that doesn't meet the regulations, and that's never been our intent, nor will it be, but that's the process by which we plan to proceed with providing a tenant in this building that we feel meets every regulation in the bylaw today, and that's why we're here for site plan approval.
Thank you, sir. I guess in fairness to you, are there commission members for the applicant that would like to see other information or something else, you know, the applicant to provide? And, yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Through, through you, Mr. Chairman, in light of the, the last comments made by the speaker, there's not much I disagree with, however, as I mentioned during my comments some time ago, we don't have the benefit, it's a site plan, and so the, the process for the town staff, Mr. Panini, is to route through the town departments. I would request between tonight's meeting and next week's, next month's meeting, that you refer the site, the traffic information that's been submitted and responded to, to Wallingford's Legal Traffic Authority, which is the police department, for written comments in advance at the December meeting. It's still a site plan, but here in the comments, I mean, we have to go through all the town departments, so I know if it wa, if it was not a special permit, so I'm not going there. As a site plan, we are entitled to request comments from town departments, and we don't have anything from Wallingford's
Legal Traffic
Legal Traffic Authority.
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and one of the things I would like to see is, you know, this, this warehouse went from 40 feet to 55 feet in the blink of an eye, and again, one of the requirements in our regulations is safety. So I would like to see, and again, this, this is a So I would like to see, and again, this, this is a very tall warehouse, and I'd like to see the fire marshal weigh in with the specs that we have right now, meaning that 55-foot height in the ceiling, whether or not the fire department can handle that, and, you know, based on, you know, potential automation equipment inside. And again, I'm going to refer you to another document. I have several documents. It's the Warehouse Capital of the World, New Jersey. It's the New Jersey State Planning Commission Distribution Warehouse and Goods Movement Guidelines. It's dated September 7th, 2022, and it talks about safety on pages 11 and 12. So basically, I'd like to see our fire marshal comment on, you know, what's proposed and what New Jersey brings up on those couple of pages.
Anyone else? Again, any final comments or, gentlemen, you have your assignment, as we have ours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll see you next month.
See you next month.
For your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Mr. Pignini, as always, take the wheel.
So bond releases and reductions. Number six, that was for Roland Technologies. The site was fully stabilized, and that bond can be fully released.
Which ones? Mr. Pignini, you're recommending, is it the Roland Technology Bond, is that correct?
Correct, yes, I believe you have to vote on it to release it, so I would, I would suggest full release of that bond.
So we have a motion to release the bond as recommended by our town planner.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
And same for number seven. That site was, I went out there and checked that out, and everything was fully compliant with the site plan, so that can be fully released as well.
And I'd entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anyone against it? Moving on.
The 521 Tully's Road, that was a special permit for a soil remediation project. That site was fully stabilized, and I was quite impressed with the job that they did. So that could be fully released as well.
And again, we entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on.
I believe I do have the PZC meeting schedule. I do have it in the cart. I believe I, we didn't make a copy of it, was it in the packet? Sandy did give me the, the one for signature, so I can hand that up to you if you don't have it.
Excuse me? I don't think, I don't believe, do we, do we need to vote? I don't believe we need to vote on this, do we? Sure. And I noticed very graciously, you did not include Valentine's Day for Mr. Fitzsimmons. I always have to see that.
I'm old softy.
Yeah, I know. And moving on.
Administrative approvals, any questions on those?
Anyone, any questions on the administrative approvals? I suspect not, because we've approved them. And bring us down, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I make a comment on the administrative approvals?
Sure.
You know, we, we got one in the mail. I, I don't know if the deadline has passed, but it was for Delta Arsenal, I believe.
Yep, yep.
And making ammunition.
Yes. I could have give a background on that, kind of. So the original approval specifically asked for manufacturing, but then it wasn't clearly stated on the approval if it was allowed or not. I brought it up to Corporation Counsel, and so she couldn't decipher whether or not it was actually allowed back in 1996 as part of that approval. They claimed that it was, so there was sort of a back and forth. So we wanted them, as part of their ATF renewal, to true it up as part of the administrative approval. So if you do have questions as a commission, I would suggest that, you know, you do bring them to a meeting if there are further questions on that.
Is it too late to request that? Really, the only question I have is, you know, the, is, is there any safety concerns that, you know, we or anybody else in the building need to be, you know, aware of?
That's what really flagged my interest in it. And I went out with the fire marshal, we did a full inspection of the property. He looked for anything that could potentially be a safety concern, and as part of that process, that's where we decided to do the administrative approval, just to shore it up, to make sure that there weren't any safety concerns from his aspect. So he did go and do a full fire inspection on the property that will be part of the administrative approval. If that helps, you can call him yourself or have him explain all of their, their ammunition. But yeah, it definitely was a concern from my end, from the zoning enforcement officer's end and as well as the fire marshal's end.
I guess if, you know, he's okay, I, you know, I think we need to see it, but thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on administrative approvals? The ZBA decisions?
Any questions on ZBA decisions, or if none, on the, on the agenda?
And then the ZBA, the current meeting coming up on November 21st, any questions on that? I'll try my best to hopefully answer anything that you may have. No questions, okay. All right.
Oh, I think, this was, this was attached for additional...
Town Center, correct.
Excuse me, for additional uses or something?
Yes.
I mean, I, I think it tracks to...
Food trucks.
Yeah, food trucks and having, having that as perhaps a permitted use and putting them in a courtyard or something along that nature, correct?
Yeah, it was supposed to be for the town center discussion.
Yeah, for the town center discussion.
It was actually brought up to me by several developers, so I thought I'd do kind of a soft sell to the commission regarding that, but it's, it's, it was a long shot, I told them, but I said I'd try, but in any case, we could discuss that at a later time.
Okay. I guess that brings us to the end of our agenda. If there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion...
I'm missing, sorry to prolong this. There's no zoning enforcement lag this month. You know, I think last month, we asked if we could get an update on how the, you know, project was going.
So it came to an administrative office decision, and if you want to discuss it personally with me, that's fine, I'd rather not discuss it publicly, but that we decided to do a quarterly report, and any questions you have monthly can be directed to the zoning enforcement officer. She has no problems answering any questions you have, and I will leave it at that for a public forum. You are definitely welcome to call me, and we can discuss the subsequent reasoning.
Without having the report in front of me, I, I don't know what, you know...
Well, we, we, she will be doing a quarterly report, which will be much more in-depth. That's what we decided on as, as an office.
All righty then.
At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 14th.
Second.
Is that 2022?
2022.
Thank you. We have a second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you.